Call Madam Clerk.
Hey, Mr. Mr. Alamein is not in. Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jared is not in. Ms. Priestley. You have two members present?
We have two members present.
I'm a high press. I don't, I don't buy it. Not that she, once she, once she her face gets red or eyeballs start bugging and I just.
That's what we're doing.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Madam Clerk. If we can, um, go ahead and do another roll call, please.
Okay, it is four thirty-eight PM and we will redo the roll call. Mr. Alamein?
Present.
Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns? Ms. Mashat?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jared?
Present.
You have six members present?
We have six members present. It is now time for the reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code, section thirty-one dash ten. Disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning if they persist in disrupting the meeting. That individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any requests for agenda changes and/or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for agenda changes and/or additions, thank you. It is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box was placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. First speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Hello. It is on. Hello, my name is R.L. Mitchell. I live at seven fifty-nine East Linden Avenue. Uh, for the record, Happy New Year and Merry Christmas and Happy gobble-gobble Thanksgiving Day to all the peoples in America, especially in New York with this election being mayor. The guy, you know who he is. But, and another thing, what about them Lions, Detroit Lions, last night? Yeah, there you go. Like, uh, and another thing, but Flint ain't too far behind. Like them guys, uh, the third ward council lady gave them picture, but they gotta go through high school first. I think they know the ropes to keep from getting hurt before they get in the game because you see how the popo try to break, break them up before they even make it to athletes and stuff. But they been so much, and Flint had its own football game quick too, like a professional. But anyway, but I wanna say this about Grand Travelers Restaurant. We got that and, and we don't have to worry about the situation in Flint because this is the last council meeting until, until the new year. I mean, we gonna get stuff to get, but the dude twenty-six years old in Canada, he holding up the game over to the door highway of the water department. He gotta come over and educate them forty other people for, for Mr. Moore can talk English. They always jumping on Mr. Moore because he filibustering around with, with Chief Green holding them back and the council lady in seven ward talking that stuff then we can't hardly get nowhere because she interrupt every now and then talking about hater, player hater, whatever she talking about, jumping on Woodson and, and, uh, talking about she, anyway, enough about talking Mrs. Shaq. That's just like wasting time talking about her because she, and another thing about the fifth ward council lady. You see, evidently, the first ward guy is still here because she made a new rule. You don't get rid of another stalemate because the council, he gotta quit on his own if he wanna quit. Like last week, y'all zoning the peoples and zoning peoples out. People don't know what's going on. They said, "We had a council meeting," and I see the first ward is still here thanks to the fifth ward with that, they really looked up. And then Ty's ain't talking about, he might as well stay home and collect the check because he thought the first ward was checking the check and nobody checking him until he read the rules what the fifth ward lady made when they tried to kick Naze out and Madam Burns. And you know, you gotta follow the rules. Robert, rules order. Welcome back, sir, first ward and, oh, has she come down, third ward? Okay, all right. Stay doing, America.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
Good evening. Ms. Gurley, Attorney Gurley. There's a lot of stuff going on here in the city of Flint that, that isn't right. I know that you had, uh, a thing where you had to investigate for forgery about Michigan tribunal taxes. Somebody forged the signature and nothing ever came out of that. You never brought that up front. Uh, I'm trying to figure out how do I fill it, uh, to try to get that information because I know it happened. Also, Neighborhood Engagement Hub. Twenty-four thousand dollars was paid out and the city wouldn't reimburse Neighborhood Engagement Hub for first ward councilman Leon Alamein because they said it was his business. They got the money. So Neighborhood Engagement Hub is on the hook for twenty-four thousand dollars. And it was all this house is done. The reason why I keep on repeating it is because I do not like the fact that Councilman Alamein has gone around saying that I'm lying about what's going on at the Neighborhood Engagement Hub when we both know that everything that I have said is factual. So, uh, either ask the city attorney, is it true? Ask the city administrator, is it true? Ask the CFO, Mr. Moore, did they reject reimbursing the Neighborhood Engagement Hub twenty-four thousand dollars? I mean, Councilwoman Priestley is the chairperson of finance, opera fund, but it's good to see that the city caught it. That lets me know that the city's doing their job. I speak bad about the city all the time, so I can also speak good about something that they've done. So that leads me to believe that they are really looking into, uh, contracts that come before them because they were the ones that caught this right here. Thank you.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Janez Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Janez Jackson. I am Kiki's mother. Good evening. My name is Janez Jackson. I am Kiki's mother. I'mma ask again, when are y'all gonna wake up? Y'all got Curious George over here, AKA Leon Alamein, AKA Leon Abdul Alamein. When is y'all gonna wake up and get him up off, off this council? When is y'all gonna wake up and see that he's a, a woman beater? When is y'all gonna wake up and see that he is a child beater? When is y'all gonna wake up and see that he is a predator? When is y'all gonna wake up? What it's gonna take for somebody to get killed, hurt? My thing is, he doing all this, you know, wait a minute, I want to bag up because the last time I seen that you was making those faces. And I did, I, I looked it up. You is, you Curious George. That's what you are, a monk, a straight monk. They don't have no respect for no women, no kids, nobody. And the thing is, I think you mad because I am a strong black woman. I am Kiki's mother. I will be there every step of the way with Kiki. And then again, I wanna ask you this. Did you have anything to do with Eric Mays? Since you got all these life insurance policies, you got one on my grandbaby, you got one on my daughter. I wanna know who else you got one, the dog down the street? You just a sorry piece of shit. Excuse my French to everybody else, but I'm talking straight to this monk.
Excuse me, ma'am. You have a right to, um, voice whatever opinions you would like to voice. However, I will ask you to refrain from using vulgar language. Go ahead and start your time.
Again, again, I'mma say this. Whenever you ready to see me, like you jumped up in your seat, like you had maggots in your tail, whenever you ready to see me, you know where I live at? I'll be sitting waiting on you. You know where I work at? I'll be sitting there waiting on you because you, you not gonna do what you did to Kiki to me. And every time a man stand up to you, you run. You a coward. You can't take the pressure. But I tell you one thing, this ain't what you want, baby. This is not what you want. And I'mma see you.
Madam Clerk, you said that was the last public speaker?
No.
No, okay, sorry about that. Next public speaker, please.
The last speaker is Diane Thornton.
Diane Thornton, fourth ward. Um, I just wanna let you guys know that, um, for all those people that have donated to the Color of Love Coalition for our backpack for the homeless is being very successful. We are, have been out there giving the backpacks and feeding them hot meals as well. And I just wanna thank everybody that has donated and, um, the donations are still coming in and we're still doing the work. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to thank everybody that has donated and, and have wanted to help. And, um, like I said, we're still taking donations because the need is real. So, um, like I said, uh, we have a Facebook page and you can reach out to us that way or the members that are here in the council, uh, most meetings. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, um, excuse me, Madam Clerk, you said that was the final public speaker, if I heard you correctly this time?
Yes.
I thank you. Um, it is now time for a council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one who wishes to speak during council response, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson, you have the floor.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Arthur, Arthur Wilson, I ain't seen you in a while. Welcome back. Um, also, um, we were down at Burston today. I'm just telling you things that were done in our ward today at Burston and Clarissa Shields gave out a meal for, um, the less fortunate or just people just don't have because of the, uh, because of the government shutdown. Um, I'd like to thank everybody and I was out participating in that and it was from eleven. We, we ran out of, we got done about just a little bit before twelve. I'd like to thank her for just coming out and showing her, um, showing our appreciation to her because she's giving back to our community and I just appreciate it. Um, also, I do, um, we was talking about, I guess I've got some calls on the water settlement. So I don't know where they're standing at and I don't know who we talked to regarding that. Um, we have calls that are coming in about that. But thanks, everybody, for showing up and happy holidays. Happy Thanksgiving to you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. So during the holiday season, um, for one, I would like to give a special, um, thank you to Bountiful Love Ministries. That's, um, Pastor Kevlin Jones. They had a Thanksgiving meal for the community and they were, um, they were giving those meals out. Not only could you dine there, but they were packing meals for the local Y MCA. So, um, that was definitely a great deal. But I wanna make sure that the community know about the other great things going on too. So the Salvation Army, they're having their community Thanksgiving meal and it's gonna be at the Salvation Army Life Center on the clock, Carpenters, excuse me, on Cloud Road, fourteen seventy-five West Carpenter Road, Coldwater Road. And it's gonna take place, um, November the twenty-sixth. So again, let me clear that up. The Salvation Army on fourteen seventy-five West Coldwater Road and it's gonna take place from four thirty to six thirty. The doors will open at four thirty. In addition to, I wanna encourage the community on Thursday to go out to Burston. Um, we know Dante Lot, he does a lot in the community, especially with the young boys and the men. Um, they're having a special Thanksgiving meal prepared as well, um, at Burston and it will take place Thursday, November the twenty-seventh and it's gonna be from noon to three. It's gonna be a free full course meal served courtesy of a partnership with, um, Burston, um, Solidified and also, um, DJ, J-Big and some other community partners. It's good to see when we have common everyday people getting together to make a difference. Um, this is what community looks like. It takes community to build community. So I wanna thank the community for supporting the community. And also, um, you know, just go out there and join them because, uh, sitting with someone and having a meal, you never know who you would meet. You never know who life you would touch or change. Um, so thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? All right. Seeing as how there's no one else who wishes to speak during council response, um, I'll take some time really quickly. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Priestley, for allowing me to stand in your place today at, uh, Richfield Early Learning Center. We did have a really good time, so thank you for allowing me to stand in your place. They, uh, partnered with Richfield Early Learning Academy, partnered with, uh, McDonald's and they gave out, uh, holiday meals. They also gave out turkeys. And so, um, Councilwoman Priestley was unable to make it, so I, I had a chance to go over there for her. They did miss you, by the way. And so, um, there are a lot of really great things happening in and around Flint, uh, especially since it's holidays, the holidays are upon us. And so, let's take advantage of all of the goodwill and let's make sure that we are helping to spread it to the Color of Love ladies. Continue doing the great work that you're doing. I know that, um, it is rather tight times for everyone, so I believe they heard their wa, the ways that they could donate, so I hope everyone does, um, extend a donation to you in the work that you are doing. Seeing as how that is my time, I'm gonna go ahead and yield the rest. Uh, that is the end of council response. We can now move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman in the fourth ward, you have the floor.
Make motion to send the consent agenda to council.
There's a motion to send the consent agenda to council? Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward? Are there separations?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward?
Two five zero three eight seven. Two five zero three eight eight.
Is that all? Yes. All right, um, are there any more separations?
Madam Chair.
Council, uh, excuse me. I'm Madam Clerk.
I'm asking if someone could separate, um, the last resolution, two five zero three eight three point one, so that I can, um, update it with the information that's missing in the blank spots.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna just, uh, separate, so we'll do a complete separation so that we can add some information into that resolution? Absolutely. So we have a complete separation. Moving on to resolution two five zero three eight seven dash T, which is the Contract for Lurvy Construction LLC, South Building Lower Level Office Renovations, Phase One, Department of Business and Community Services. What is the pleasure of the body? It's been a motion to move to council by the councilman in the eighth ward. Is there support? Moved and properly supported, I think I heard sixth ward first, so moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward? Uh, is there anyone who would like to floor in the first round of discussions? Councilwoman in the sixth ward, you have the floor. Lee, if you could please join us at the lectern.
Yeah, I am.
Hey, Lee, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. Um, just for the record, can you say your name and your position?
Uh, Lee Asborn, um, facility maintenance manager.
Okay, thank you. So we did briefly talk about, and this is for the construction, um, in that building. Can you tell me what, um, what is the scope of the work that will be done?
Uh, Lurvy is doing it. It's, uh, the flooring, ceiling, um, so it'll be ceiling tile, the pipe installation's gonna get redone, um, the flooring's gonna get replaced, um, and obviously they're gonna have, you know, get furniture and stuff like that.
Okay. And I think, and it stated it had some, was there mold or mildew from leaks before?
Correct. You're talking about the south building, correct?
I'm talking about the south. I think that was in.
Yep.
Yeah. And so this, I know we've had leaks because the age of the buildings.
Correct.
And this one had had it too. So was there a lot of mold or just limited amount into certain areas?
It was in certain areas and we have the, um, the main pipes are running through there for the cooling system and the pipe, the insulation around the pipe has failed because it's old, so that's gonna be replaced as well when we do the project.
So is that asbestos that it's wrapped with?
No.
It's not?
Nope.
Okay.
There may be a few nineties that are. I have a book that, that we have everything.
And a lot of people, that's the elbows, right?
Yes. Yep, yep. So some of those are, but, um, I, you know, we don't know how many until we get up there. I mean, I have a book that we could go through and find out how many, but.
Yeah, a lot that you don't get into, to you, like, say, you, you're in there and tearing it apart.
Yes.
How long will it take?
You know, um, I think they're looking at approximately like a month to do it is what the time limit they're thinking.
Okay. Um, because I also have questions that we did talk, talk about, which I appreciate you answering those questions about the police station, um, and then also the women's, I hate to call it locker room.
Locker room.
But.
Yep. That, that's coming up. I think that's gonna be next, on your next meeting should be there to get that redone.
Okay. Because I wanna make sure all of, and you and I did discuss, um, with the age of the building that it's, that issues, all of them.
Yep.
And I think, uh, someone had talked about, we don't really hear about what's the fire station. Is that the same too?
Yes.
Okay.
And we are redoing some of that. I, there's gonna be one coming up for the kitchen. There's going to be one coming up for the kitchen. Get some kitchens done.
Is that number one?
No, that, that's going to be on the agenda, but that's not coming up yet. We're doing six, I think six is next.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, no problem. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to floor in the first round of discussion? Is there anyone who would like to floor in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else who would like the floor, this is the roll call vote for Resolution 250387-T, which is the Lower Level Office Renovations, Phase One, Department of Business and Community Services. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Vote is nine yes, zero no?
The vote is nine yes, zero no. Resolution 250387-T moves to council. Moving on to Resolution 250388-T, Metron Farnier LLC, purchase of water meters, water service center. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
There's been a motion to send to council by the councilwoman in the sixth ward, supported by the councilman in the eighth ward. Is there a discussion in the first round? Councilman in the eighth ward, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, through you to Mr.?
He is here.
Mr. Jiggy.
Did you find anything out as far as the warranty or any kind of, any kind of chargebacks we can have to the existing provider for me?
Yes, I did. The warranty is five years. It's a 20-year warranty on the battery and the Badger meter. But on the physical part?
It's five.
It's a five year against workmanship or actual structure damage, like it won't fail.
Sure. So the ones that we are replacing, I, I think you, you brought exhibit for the class, huh?
Yes, we brought some show and tell for you. This is the, this is the Badger meter with the long cord. I mean, it's.
Okay.
Probably eight foot long.
Yeah, I think that's what I have in my house, yeah.
Yeah, we're having connectivity issues with that.
Okay.
Where we have to go in and try and find a place where it'll connect. And we're finding that these cables are being cut. Or you can disconnect it here.
Okay.
So we're finding them disconnected or cut.
Okay, so what happens if it's disconnected or cut?
Like there's no connectivity with the internet.
So what happens then at that point?
Then we can't read the meters.
So I'm going to go home and cut mine, just.
And then we'll, we'll notify, it will notify us that there's no more reading and we'll be out there to visit you.
Okay.
To replace it.
So if that's the case, the meter itself isn't failing, maybe there's, so. If, if there's connectivity issues with that and we already have those, then you've identified the problem, why do we need to switch?
Well, actually, we're not switching. This is the, this is the Metron meter here.
Okay.
And this is the antenna.
Yep.
We currently have hundreds, thousands of these in our system.
Okay.
And from before Badger and after Badger.
So these ones that you're replacing, we don't have Badgers that are less than five years old that these are replacing?
Some of the Badgers have been tampered with, they're, they're easily tampered with. I'm being told by our meter shop that they're finding the Badgers are being tampered with and becoming useless.
Tampered, tampered with by residents?
Yes.
So. Madam Chair, through you to the city attorney?
Go ahead.
Madam City Attorney, what, what repercussions can we go back to residents or whoever is tampering with water meters on a legal matter in, in lieu of spending $3,000 to replace their meter after they tamper with it?
The, the meters aren't $3,000.
That's what this says?
No, I, I got a, I got an accurate price list. The six inch meters are 3,000. Commercial meters.
Okay, hold, hold that thought real quick. Let me, let me get the response from Madam City Attorney.
Through the chair. We would have to do an investigation. There, there are ordinances that we have that will be applicable.
Okay.
But this is the first that I'm hearing.
Okay, so any evidence of tampering, I, I need you guys to get with the city attorney so that we can resolve that and, and stop that from happening in the future by setting, hopefully setting a precedent that we're not going to allow that. Okay, so going forward, on these ones, the resolution is for, you know, north of a hundred or of a half a million dollars for, the resolution says you're going to produce or you're going to purchase 170? 170 meters or something like that? So the math on that is 3,000 bucks a piece, so.
Well, I don't know whose math that is, but what the actual Metrons.
190. So if you do, you know, 547,000, so is this all commercial that we're buying?
No, all our commercials right now are currently on the Metron system.
Okay.
There is no Badgers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to floor in the first round of discussion?
2,800.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward?
Thank you. So all of the commercials are on. And so are we, is this an effort to transition the residential onto?
We're, we're not trying to do a meter changeout program. We're just trying to replace what's out there with something that we know that works. Slowly and gradually as they need replacing or as we're trying to put in new meters for new builds, new residential areas, subdivisions, whatnot. We're, we're wanting to put the Metrons in.
So you're saying you're not trying to do a meter replacement? But if a meter goes bad, or, I mean, what is the criteria for having a meter? Because I know that in my area, it does not read. I also was told that if you go in my basement and flip it, you will be able to look at how much water was used. Because the reads, I guess, with the antenna transmitting with the Badger system we have, it's prepaid for 10 years. And that was paid by the wind fund. That system would cost $9.2 million and it's paid for. It's paid for. And so if we're saying we're getting, and 576,000 is quite a bit. And we're, you're saying you don't know whose math this is. Who, whose math is this? So that we, if, if they don't cost 3,000, what is the cost of the new Metron?
The, the Metron costs $385 each for a three quarter inch meter and $605 each for a one inch meter.
So 300 and 600?
Yes.
And so what is our criteria? So what is your criteria for saying I'm going to, we want to change your meter? Because during COVID, it was mandatory that they went into people's homes and, and changed your meter. And if you didn't, they cut your water off even up to last year.
That was a, that was a meter changeout program during COVID, started in 2019.
Yeah, but it went slow.
And it went till 2022, I believe, December?
It went a little further because people didn't want, people don't like people in their homes.
I understand.
And so they were cutting people's water off if you didn't get your meter changed.
So that was, that was an actual, correct me if I'm wrong, but a state mandated change to the meter system? Didn't they require that? Okay, so.
So when we got on the system under the administrative consent order, that was mandated. That's why we got a new system. And that was the Badger system, which was the 9.2 million. How proficient is anyone at using that system? Because it's really complex. Is anyone?
The, the agreement you have says for 10 years, they're going to provide support.
Do they provide that? No?
Not like you're thinking. We have to send back meters to that fail. We send them back by the pallet load. And it costs us roughly $1,500 a pallet to send it back to Badger. They, they don't tell us what's wrong with the meters. They don't tell us why they failed. And they send us a pallet back at our cost at $1,500.
So 3,000?
3,000.
15, one way, 1,500 to send it back. And so they're not, so is anyone trained on how to use the Badger system? I mean, if you're saying they're supposed to offer support, because I know it's, it measures a lot of different things. And it's a, they call it the Cadillac system. That is the, that's what they call it. But you guys are saying you want a more simplified system. Does anybody know, how do you measure, how much water leakage are we getting from water that we buy? Do we know? Because that system is supposed to be able to measure that. How much water is purchased that is lost?
It's going to measure the leakage within that, that building. So which, whatever building it's metering, it's going to determine how much leakage there is. Like if you've got a leaky faucet or a leaky toilet, it's going to tell you how much you're losing. It's not going to tell you how much leakage you got throughout the system.
I was told it does.
Just within, no, you can't do that.
Oh, okay, so it, because, so is there anybody who used, who knows how, has used that system prior? Because if they're not offering support like they're supposed to, how are you supposed to know how to use it?
My meter foreman Curtis is, is on top of it. And Amanda, according to Jiggy, is on top of, of using that system. They know the ins and outs of it. I know Curtis does. I talk to Curtis daily and he, he's very disappointed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the first round of discussion? Is there anyone in the second round of discussion? Councilman Pfeiffer, you have the floor.
So if, if the dollar is 300 to 500, why do we need 2,000 of them?
For the new construction, new builds.
We're not building 2,000 houses, so.
Well, I wasn't done, but it's the new builds. And it's to replace the faulty ones, the ones that have failed or the ones that have been tampered with, the ones that cables have been cut. All these, we're, we're trying to just eliminate the, the failure rate.
So. This says the Water Department requests an emergency purchase pending a larger request for city council. So you're meaning to tell me that these are, 2,000 is, is what we need short term and there's going to be more replacements in the future? In, in the short, in the near future, you're going to want more than a half million dollars?
Well, I think that's just a reoccurring cost with, with the water system and on meters.
But this says pending a larger request, so.
Not, this is a, this is for a yearly.
So is this, is this staff review just a copy and paste of, of something? Or do, can we look, or are we looking forward to a multimillion dollar purchase of meters?
No, last year, we, we, we spent $625,000 on meters. It's the same for Metron.
You're not helping your case of why we got to spend a half million dollars a year?
It's a yearly, it's a yearly cost. This is a cost of doing business. This is a cost of us having to buy meters to meter the water that we're selling to the customer.
So every year, we got to replace 10% of our meters?
They, we have issues with meters. We do have issues with meters. They go bad, they get tampered with, they freeze. So it could be any reason why we would have to replace meters. It's a number of reasons why we have to replace meters. The thing is, but if we don't have these, then we don't replace them. Then they, the, the public has no meters.
No, no, I, I understand that. I'm just wondering, I'm wondering, just understanding how we, as a community, have to replace 10% of our meters every year? Because if you're talking half a million dollars in that, by my, the math that you told me on what these meters actually cost, it's basically 10% of our system every single year. I'm just trying to figure that out. Why, why, why is it, as a community, we, we're going through 10% meter swap out every single year?
And if it's new accounts, if we have new accounts, if it's new accounts also, so.
But new accounts, then that meter just goes back into circulation, right? We don't throw that a meter away, the old one that came off, right? I mean, we don't have that many new hookups.
I, I think Jiggy meaning the apartments and housing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else who wishes to speak in the second round of discussion, I will take a little bit of time. So if I am understanding you correctly, so our population has increased again. So we're at about, what, 93,000 people or whatever now? I do understand that we were saying in 2019, we had a mandatory meter replacement. And so it took, obviously, all the way through COVID and also through just basic life stuff of people not wanting people in their homes to replace said meters. We currently have meters now that, for whatever the reason, we've not been provided a reason, but for whatever the reason, those meters are going out, right? And so I think that with having these meters since maybe 2019 and then having, what, more people moving in, having to keep in mind some of the new builds that are coming, having to keep in mind, this is Michigan, weather is not the best, then whatever faulty thing that's happening with the meters. I don't think that 10% is an egregious number when you're talking in terms of our population and our population increasing. The only thing that concerns me is when we have meters going out and we can't get an explanation as to why. I do understand that you're saying that right now you're trying to be proactive, right? You have a certain amount of meters that you know are, that have already gone out. And then in anticipation for what's been replaced since 2019, again, as you have those weather related events, you have those people moving in, you have just whatever faulty thing is happening, you want to make sure that you order enough so that when you come back, so you do not have to come back with this size request or not come back in front of us for a while. So I do get what you're saying. Maybe sometimes you just need a little bit more help tying it all together when you're standing in front of us. But it does make sense for us to be prepared, especially since they are forecasting a brutal, brutal winter for us. And then I think that when we have the opportunity to make sure that we are ahead of something as opposed to being behind it, because I certainly wouldn't want to be one of the homes who gets caught with not being able to have a meter and having to wait for someone to have a decision as to whether or not I can have a meter. We definitely want to make sure that residents are getting charged accurately. So that's another reason that we want to make sure that all of the meters are working correctly. I do hear what you're saying. I do understand that you are being proactive, but I do understand that this is necessary. With that being said, I will yield, this is the roll call vote to send 250388-T to council. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mr. Alamein? Vote is six yes, three no?
The vote is six yes, three no. That resolution does move to council. Moving on to Resolution 250383.1-T, which is the approval of obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate application, 703 Software and Traverse Street. Madam Clerk, I know that you asked to have this separated because you needed to make some adjustments. So I do need a motion from the floor. There's been a motion by the councilman in the eighth ward to send to council, supported by the councilwoman in the fourth ward. Madam Clerk, please go ahead with your update.
Okay, um. So I'm asking that this resolution actually be amended because in addition to filling in the blanks, I'm also asking that one paragraph be removed because it's unnecessary. So the resolution would be amended to 250383.2. And on the first page, And on the first page, the fourth paragraph that begins with exceeding five percent will not have the effect of sustain, of substantially impeding the operation of the qualified local government unit, et cetera. That entire paragraph can be removed. Um, and then on the second page of the resolution, the second paragraph on the second page where there are blanks, the city of Flint requires that rehabilitation of the facility shall be completed by, I wanna add the date of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And then in the resolved paragraph, um, for the blanks, um, the first one is approved for a period of ten years, beginning December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and ending on December thirtieth, twenty thirty-five. And those would be the amendments that I'm requesting for this resolution.
All right, Madam Clerk, if I heard you correctly, on the first page, the fourth paragraph, removing that paragraph, correct?
Yes, removing it entirely.
And then on the second page, the second paragraph, we're adding in October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, correct?
Correct.
And then on the resolved, we're resolving for ten years from December twenty twenty-five to December twenty thirty-five, correct?
Yes, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirtieth, twenty thirty-five.
Got it. Is there anyone who will make a motion for those, uh, changes? Uh, councilmen in the eighth ward, uh, made the motion. Councilwoman in the fourth ward supported the motion. This is the roll call vote to make those changes and turn this to resolution two five zero three eight three point two. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Excuse me, Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis? Is not in. The vote is eight yes, zero no?
The vote is eight yes, zero no. That has, that has been, um, made a point two, uh, in regard to two five zero three eight three point two, which is the approval of obsolete property rehab, rehabilitation exemption, certificate application, seven oh three, South Grand Traverse Street. Councilman in the eighth ward has made the motion to move to council. Is there support?
I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Supported by the councilwoman in the fifth ward. Is there discussion in the first round? Is there discussion in the second round? Seeing as how there's no discussion, this is the roll call vote to move resolution two five zero three eight three point two to council. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no?
The vote is. Excuse me, the vote is eight yes, zero no. Resolution two five zero three eight three point two has been moved to council. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. There's a motion made by councilman in the eighth ward to adjourn. Is there support? Supported by the councilman in the first ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yep.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no?
The vote is nine yes, zero no. The time is now five twenty-four PM on Monday, November twenty-fourth. I hereby adjourn this special affairs committee meeting. I hereby adjourn this special affairs committee meeting.
[laughing]
I ain't trying to be funny and, and the, where he, he got an extension, I thought he had a little mon, ankle monitor wrong. I'm just saying, uh, first for a councilman, Ian, and like, but that's all I had to say, family. Good evening. Good evening, family. Oh man, is they starting it yet? Just here to entertain y'all. LaDell in the building, okay, I'm saying, some of the family that's down there. LaDell ain't in the, oh yeah, LaDell's there. Is that LaShaw? Mm, 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 mm. I was listening, man, when Art went up there and said that, would they, the city ain't reimburse that twenty-four thousand, wowzers. Now, I was just asking, I wasn't trying to be funny and nothing, I was, because I'm like, then last time he had to leave, I thought he'd be at like, maybe they got a way he can be in a little later or something, you know, this is a job, you know, they let you with your job. So him coming in, it's a lot of money, gotta get past tonight. I ain't gonna say it, ain't nothing new. But, I'm just saying, maybe with the connection he got on where they can let him be out a little later. That's our Greg Gregory, you terrible. That's LaDell in her purple top, perhaps my granny's. Ah, that's a terrible man. I do not like how this council, the city of Flint, how they got their cameras. Everywhere else, the camera's right on the council people, you can see them. But only in Flint. But they keep oppressing the people through every way possible. Okay, just said the city didn't reimburse, but he already got the money from them. Wow, so, so that, so, so would it just point seeing money gone? What's up, Lumi and the Lummi in the building, Broward County checking in. Waiting on, on the start council, I gotta entertain the fam. This old spatially at night, you heard Flint City Council, where they can just, they make stealing seem like it's the best thing to do allegedly. Never seen nothing like this. I never seen nothing like this. Let me see if they ready to start. What's up, Marcia?
If I could have, uh, councilmembers take their seats and we will go ahead and start the council meeting.
The time is five forty PM. And in accordance with section three dash two oh one B of the Flint City Charter, I am calling the city council meeting to order for the purpose of the organization of the Flint City Council. Before we get started, I will take the roll call. Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Machette?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have eight members present. Just one second. As always, when I call your name for this part of the agenda, you will state the name of the person who you wish to elect as the president of the city council for the next year. Unfortunately, I do not have the rounds number with me right now. This will be added to the other rounds because we count them as a whole. So I'm just going to start with one today, but if you end today, the minutes will reflect the total. And if not, when we come back, we will come with the, um, the next number at that time. So right now, we're gonna call this round one just for this meeting. And we're going to start with Mr. Alamin, who is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Judy Priestley.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
That's one vote for Ms. Priestley. Two votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. And one vote for Ms. Lewis. And I have to add that the first, um, member who gets five votes would be named the president of the council, moving on to round two. Dr. Lewis?
LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin is not in. That's two votes for Dr. Lewis. Two votes for Ms. Machette. And four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round three. Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
That's two votes for Dr. Lewis. Three votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round four. Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
That's three votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Two votes for Dr. Lewis. Round five. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
That's four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Three votes for Ms. Machette. Two votes for Dr. Lewis. Round six. Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
That's three votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Two votes for Dr. Lewis. Round seven. Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Three votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Two votes for Dr. Lewis. Round eight. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Three votes for Ms. Machette. Two votes for Dr. Lewis. Round nine. Mr. Jarrett?
Machette.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
That's three votes for Ms. Machette. Three votes for Dr. Lewis. Three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round ten. Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
That's one vote for Ms. Priestley. Two votes for Dr. Lewis. Two votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round eleven. Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? That's two votes for Dr. Lewis. Three votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round twelve. Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
That's two votes for Dr. Lewis. Three votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round thirteen. Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
That's two votes for Ms. Machette. Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Three votes for Dr. Lewis. Round fourteen. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Four votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Two votes for Ms. Machette. Three votes for Dr. Lewis. Round fifteen. Ms. Burns?
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Machette?
Candace Machette.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett?
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson?
Dr. LaDell Lewis.
Priestley?
Candace Machette.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Winfrey Carter. Madam Chair? Or Madam Clerk?
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I would like to make a motion that we, um, postpone the organizational rounds until the next, um, council meeting. It appears that we're not gonna get anywhere and we have people waiting. So I would like to move on with the regular council meeting.
Before... Okay, um, before I take the roll call on that motion, I just wanna state the last round totals. Ms. Winfrey Carter had four votes. Ms. Machette had three votes. And Dr. Lewis had two votes. Ms. Winfrey Carter has made a motion to postpone the organization of the city council until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. I believe that's December eighth. And that was supported by Ms. Burns. And we'll take the roll call on that motion, Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, one no. So the organization will be postponed until the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Alright, so we will continue with the agenda, next on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Priestley, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now it's time for the prayer of the blessing. Um, but before we do the prayer of the blessing, we would like to remember those that may have transitioned. So does anyone on the council body have anyone they would like to acknowledge during this time?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Madam Chair, would like to have a moment of silent prayer for the family of Mr. Derek Marshall, for the family of Mrs. Kathleen Jones, for the family of Ms. Deborah Hayes, as well as the family of Ms. Talia Washington Winfrey.
Alright. Thank you. Anyone else?
The passing of Thama El Burket, um, give a special prayer out to her family, Tina Thompson.
Is that it?
Yes.
Alright. Go ahead, Ms. Alamin. To the Sawyer family? Alright.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Also for our former ombudsman, Darryl Buchanan, lost his mother, June Buchanan.
Alright. Anyone else? Alright, seeing no one else, I would like to, um, to add Mr. Larry Stribbling. Moment of silence starts now. Okay, thank you. So now it's time for the prayer of the blessing. Um, council member, um, Jarrett, would you please lead us in the prayer of the blessing? No? Yeah, so I, I ask for a council member in the ninth ward.
Lord, our simple prayer is that your will be done. Nothing more, nothing less, nothing else. It is in your name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Alright, next is the reading of the disorderly person. Go ahead.
Could we please ask everyone to silence their phones? It's gone off several times in the last couple of minutes.
Absolutely.
Per our council rules.
Thank you. So per council rules, please silence your cell phone so they will not interrupt the meeting. Thank you so much in advance. Alright, so now we're moving on to the reading of the disorderly person city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be violation of the Flint City Code, section thirty-one ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meeting. So now it's time for requests for agenda changes or additions. Do we have any agenda changes?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Machette.
Actually, I probably don't need to make the change just in case. It's not gonna get separated, never mind.
Alright, so since we don't have any more agenda changes, we're gonna move on to the public hearing. The public hearing, it is regarding an ordinance to amend the Flint City Code of ordinances, amending chapter fifty. So I am going to ask the city attorney, do you have any comment? Or anything that the public should know about this specific public hearing?
Through the chair, this is a planning and development item, and it is to make some amendments to the childcare zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so with that being said, we will begin this public hearing. This is public hearing number two, four, zero, four, five, nine. So first speaker for the public hearing, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, excuse me.
For public hearings, anyone who wishes to address the council on this public hearing only just walks up to the microphone. And you have to only talk about the subject of the hearing.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Clerk, Davina Donahue, my name is R.L. Mitchell. Resided at seven fifty-nine East Linden Avenue, which a whole lot of people got rich in Flint because seven fifty-nine came out in the number of the day and everybody said, I know you got some money, Mitchell, what, what? But that's my address. Anyway, addressed this situation about childcare situation. There was a situation on York Street the other day.
Excuse me, Mr.?
About, about, about.
Excuse me, R.L., so we need you to be germane exclusively to the public hearing about amending the zoning. So we're gonna ask you for you to please stay germane.
Like I was saying, I was invited to a zone meeting over on York Street the other day by a telephone call. And I was, and it was mentioned about, like, the third ward woman said, certain people's gonna get their money before December, and certain people's probably ain't. And but I ran into another situation. To you, Madam, I mean, president, president to Davina Donahue. Davina Donahue, what you done done to the first ward councilman? He didn't show up at the zone.
Okay, R.L., R.L., that's your time. We're gonna move on.
Hey, lady, I'm a, I'm a.
Thank you so much.
Good, what's up?
We ask for you to be germane, thank you. So next speaker for the hearing, Madam Clerk.
Arthur Woodson, she just stated that this was about childcare when he was talking about childcare. When did anybody come up here and speak about this right here? I don't remember seeing or hearing. Why would you vote on this not knowing? Is it just childcare, or is it adult foster? Is it the part of the zoning where they trying to move all these group homes in one area? Because I'm gonna tell you right now, you can't do that with veteran housing, I know for sure. Because they tried to do it over in Flint Township, and I sued them. And under, what is it, forty-two USC thirty-six zero four HUD, reasonable accommodation. I can put a group home, a veteran housing, anywhere I want to if they have disabilities. So you can't tell them where they have to put their group home if it's dealing with disabilities. And that's a lawsuit waiting to happen. I seen something in there about green. Really, you need to bring the imagined Flint back up here to the forefront because President Trump isn't giving money for anything green. And you had East Side and the North Side zoned as green zones. And when Kevin was here when he was doing it, he said that we couldn't build a high school over on the North Side unless it was green. So why not bring it back up here because it's a living document and you can change it? Why not bring it back and put East Side and North Side traditional so that you can get some dollars so that we can really fix up the North Side and the East Side? Because in your ward, Councilwoman Johnson, you have what they used to call green innovation, where if your house burned down between Pearson Road, Carpenter Road, what was it, Martin Luther King and Saginaw, it was green innovation. And if it burnt down, you couldn't fix it back up. They changed it to where you have to come to the planning commission and ask, can you fix it up? It's just that area right there. So y'all need to ask them to come back up here and explain the green zone to y'all so that y'all can make amendments to it. Thank you.
Alright, next, Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Joel Arnold, Flint resident. And I'm just speaking on the item of this public hearing, this zoning reform. As I understand it, these seem like some good reforms. One of them just takes a lot of places in our city where currently we cannot build childcare and legalizes more childcare facilities. As I understand it, some folks in the department have gotten applications for new childcare facilities but haven't been able to approve them because of the way that our current code is written. So I know I've been up here before saying that we're never done tweaking zoning, and it's approved in here again tonight. So I think it makes a lot of sense. And then I know Art was speaking to adult foster care homes. And when I was reading this, it looks like what it does is it says if you've got a foster care home or adult foster care home with seven or more people, it can't be within, I think it's a thousand or fifteen hundred feet of another one. The state doesn't let us regulate homes that have six or less people, but seven or more we can. So it really seems like it tries to deconcentrate some of adult foster care homes. I know there's two within a block of my house, and so we see that a lot. This tries to just spread them out a little bit more. And yeah, the childcare ones, just, it looks like they just allow childcare facilities in more parts of our city, which it's a pretty low intensity use that a lot of people like to have close to their house. So I think they're great ordinance changes. I hope they get approved. And I know if anybody wants some long and boring reading to fall asleep to, I know there's some documents on the city website that kind of go through all the planning commission's thoughts on this. So I hope it gets approved. I think it's some good changes. Thanks, guys.
Next public speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deion Freeman. Not used to looking at so many ordinances and how they're laid out. And I was just wondering if you all could help me understand, in the grid, what does the P, the S, and the A stand for? And of these amendments, the ones that you're actually wanting to amend are the ones that are struck out and rewritten on the back? Is that correct? The ones you want to amend?
Yeah, we can't go back and forth, but hopefully somebody will answer the council comment.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Alright, so seeing that we don't have any more public speakers regarding this specific public hearing, this public hearing is now closed. So now moving on to the next public hearing, public hearing number two, five, zero, three, eight, three point six is the public hearing regarding obsolete property rehabilitation exempt certificate application. And it is for seven oh three South Grand Traverse Street. Alright, so before we get started, Madam Attorney?
This is the next, through the chair, this is the next step for approval of the Oprah where the council hears public comment on the actual application.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, so now we will move on and we will open up this public hearing to speak about specifically this consideration of obsolete property rehabilitation application. So the first speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Emily Fuerherm, and I'm here to speak in favor of this. I am one of the co-owners of the property. My husband and I are a young family. We would like to open a restaurant here. And we have a LOI for a MEDC grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that relies on this Oprah being passed. We want to, we love Flint. We want to open a restaurant here. We want to, you know, build on the storied history of this place and celebrate its history through food, community, and through our own investment in it as well. So the grant that we would get from the state would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we would invest directly into the property. And the restaurant would also hire ten additional people. So it's also an employment opportunity as well as an additional dining opportunity for our community. So I hope you'll support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing.
Alright, I have nothing, or I don't have anything against Oprahs. They are serious. They are helpful. But it's a lot of buildings around here that have Oprahs. And they never occupy the buildings, you know, that's revenue for the city. And also, you all give out the max of Oprah, I think it's twelve years. Why do you give out the max every, every single time? Instead of saying, you know, hey, you know what, I give it to you for two years. Let me see how many people you hire from the city of Flint. And after the two years, you come back and renew it. I mean, you can do that. And it's nothing against this business here. I'm talking about those big Ashley Capital businesses. But just to give you an example of how the state and the city, I can't even say the city right now, but the state and the banks. I went to the bank with my building, and I asked for a loan. And I was putting my business, my building up as collateral. They told me that I had to be in business, or had to have the building for two years before I can even get a loan for that building. But I see other businesses able to get money for their building when they just purchase it. I spoke to Donaldson from MEDC, that was this year I spoke to him. And we were trying to get money from MEDC. They told me that they didn't have any programs or any money for us to be able to get money from them. And like I say, I have nothing against this business right here. But we spoke at the same time. They getting ready to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from MEDC, but they told us that they didn't have any programs or any money for our business. Basically, what I'm saying is, here in the city of Flint, African Americans have to use their capital out of their pocket to refurbish old buildings. But other people, they give loans and grants to, and it's highly upsetting to hear and see. And it's just something that, you know, have to be spoken about because it's unfair. Everybody should be able to get the same treatment, same opportunity. So I'm gonna come down and ask for Oprah and see if I can get one too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm R.L. Mitchell. I'm for the lady Wood, who come up here, she gonna, her family gonna get the restaurant. Because I worked at a restaurant exactly like hers, name of Buckingham Alley, Steppen's Restaurant. And there haven't been one here since he took off until now. And I was only thirteen years old, working as a dishwasher in Steppen's Restaurant. And I actually almost supposed to been killed in there, but I refused to report this stuff because I was so-called Christian. And they had my voice, they had it all on tape. They said, does anybody wanna hear it? It's up to the doctor. Because I was, he thought I was cheating him by punching in before I put my uniform on. That day, I had took my uni, oh, he told me, I took, then punch in, then he had some guys to jump on from prison. Steppen Restaurant. And I was, and I'm all for it, like Woodson say. Black peoples in Flint, they treat blackies like they ain't nothing, like they, they all, but I'm, hey, I was at Mr.'s Restaurant. He had, anybody know thing about Buckingham Alley, Steppen's Restaurant? And I was doing, I get some little, I had my sixty-three Catalina car going southwestern. And I still have nightmares about that, and I supposed to been killed by two dudes jumped on, their mother worked it in the kitchen in the basement. The big millionaires be gambling down there every day, Mr. Mike and all his buddies. And they, and, right, I'm all for you to come back in. Anyway, stay tuned, America. You gonna see what Flint is really made out of before these peoples, don't want certain peoples to talk about Flint, but nah, take that.
Alright, seeing that there is no more, okay, so we have two more speakers.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Jones. My question is, our concern is, my group that's here is concerned about the homeless and unhoused. I don't know nothing about what they have, but in Flint, we really have something going on with the homeless, so.
Oh, ma'am, so it isn't time for that. We're talking exclusively to the public hearing of the obsolete property rehab certificate. And so we're gonna have public speaking right after this.
Okay.
Next speaker.
Evening, Council, Joel Arnold, just here to speak in support of this Oprah designation for the property in Grand Travers. I think, right, it's an abandoned building being renovated by Flint residents for a business that'll employ Flint residents. I think it's kind of what a lot of us talk about all the time when we say that we want to see economic development in our city led by people that live in our city. Plus, you know, I think the exciting thing about this often, right, is it does, you know, freeze some property tax revenue, but the city actually gets more revenue from income taxes and water sewer revenue, and there's no abatements on that, right? So every job this creates pays city income tax, pays into the city, pays water sewer revenue, pays into the city. And we have one less sort of abandoned, blighted building in our city. So I think it's a wonderful idea. Selfishly, I live a five-minute walk from it, so I'd love to see something in there as well. But I think it's a great thing and just wonderful to see folks that live in our city, you know, rebuilding our city. So thanks.
Thank you. Any more speaker for this public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Patty Perkins. I live on Fifth Street. I'm president of the Grand Travers District Neighborhood Association. The restaurant that's being proposed is in that neighborhood. I've been there for twenty-five years now. I've seen everything in our neighborhood. It's getting better by the day. I would definitely support a business in that neighborhood, especially one that involves people, any kinds of people, kids, anyone. And I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I just want to voice my support. And they have the support of the neighborhood also. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So seeing that that was the last speaker for this public hearing, we would like to call this public hearing now closed. Alright, so now it's time for public comments. So Madam Clerk, first speaker?
First speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Hello, I'm R.L. Mitchell. To speak on this, the situation about the Howard State situation over there on the there on, uh, anyway, I used to go through that Howard State for the, for I even know it was a Howard State game. I was wondering why everybody look, look at me every time I go, they wonder why I can go in and come out without getting touched. I didn't know what's, and I'm telling, now I know, cause they done jumped on, you heard what Mr. Jones, Johnson said, the killer hustlin' in a, in a sign that's on Oprah, Oprah. I used to walk through there, the kid, and they used to follow me. I used to go through Stewart School in the, in the open field and they, that's when they stopped following me because it's in the open. It go through, because I always go to church over on Lippincott, where the dead man been. In that nighttime, I walked back through on Quaker Street, where I met a homeless woman. She told me to stay the night with her. And, and they be wondering, and all the dudes be wondering why I come out, how I disappeared in them little bushes back there. I was in that woman's house. She has so many homeless peoples in there that, that's what I wanted to say about the House of Esther. It's another house situation of, like Pearson Road, y'all jumped on maze about getting them, that's what it's on York Street. The House of Esther situation. Get them women's with their kids, living there, four units, and he want to turn them into houses and the peoples is talking about meters up here, talking, cutting the meters and all that stuff and like them houses in front of Northwestern make, down the wham bam, thank you ma'am, situation, just tore all them houses down because you wouldn't cooperate with them. And that's why they using this first ward was sitting in maze seat, he want him to show up. That's why I finna ask the beaner, what you done? Look at that, that dude done disappeared again, sitting in maze seat, wanting him to show up in the, the zone, zoning the dark peoples out and only one person was talking in, in, in that ward. And the woman who was gonna talk, she just sit back there and let the other woman talk, a black woman too. That like she get, like the O.K. dough, like Jim John Purple Kool-Aid with that sign down when they saw somebody, they set up there like a D.I.A. headlight, set up when the people scheming on them, they don't want darkies to take up, take, get up. And they moved the whole church out, the whole neighborhood on the corner of York between Saget Hall, Presbyterian Church, and they can use that man, but, he gotta talk for himself. The councilman right there, what in that E.D.I.A. mean looking do, I mean, Miss Byrne is the only one showing up at that zoning. My teeth coming back. Stay tuned, America.
Thank you. Next, held the speaker, Madam Clerk?
Arthur Woodson.
Hey, so, 240-459-T. It does have residential rehabilitation facilities on there. 50 dash, 50 dash 111. Why won't you, uh, postpone this so you can find out from planning and development what it is they're changing? Where would it, what would it even be at? Do they tell you where it's gonna be, where it's gonna be located? I know when I used to go to the, the meetings, they had it on the map where it was gonna be located. Have y'all even, have y'all heard anything about it? I mean, did they come and explain to you all what they're changing and how they changing it, what they changing it for, where it's gonna be located at, or anything like that? I mean, I haven't heard anything. And how can you vote on something that you don't even really know what it is that they're planning on doing or why they changing it? Because like I said, matter of fact, I think I just set up a house once you change it just to show you that you can't tell a person who's putting in a facility with a person that has disabilities, you can't tell them where they can be located. They tried to do that in Flint Township where it was a 1R, R1A zoning and I wanted to put a veteran facility in that zoning and they went against it. So, civil rights from the DOJ came up here and told them that I could because it was reasonable accommodations. So, I mean, you need to have them to come up here and speak about it. Councilwoman Johnson, Friday, Ms. Deborah Greenspan requested or asked Judge Levy, could she have permission to start sending out award letters and start sending out money for the Flint water crisis? And this was just sent to her, Judge Levy, Friday. You can look it up in M-Live, I think it was the article Friday about it. They said that the award letters, when I spoke to the lawyer, that the award letters should be out, everybody should have them before December 21st. That's what the lawyer told me, so it could be something different, but I know for a fact that the article was in M-Live where Ms. Greenspan asked, could she start dispersing the money, which isn't nothing for real though, for all the people who have died here in the city of Flint and our water is still not safe. And we are reaping the health of it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
The next speaker is Janez Jackson.
My name is Janez Jackson. I am Kiki's mother. July the 10th, Leon Alameen beat my daughter, he strangled her. July the 20th, he came and got his son from my house after he got out of jail. July the 21st, I got my grandson back. July the 31st, my mom's house on 1055 East Stewart, it was explosion. And then today, it's funny, he, he gotta go to court tomorrow, his house had caught on fire. What it's gonna take? Wake up, counsel. He thinking my daughter there and my grandbabies. When are y'all gonna wake up and see what y'all got on, what y'all got? He don't even live in Flint. And he talking about he distraught, that's the reason he can't go to court? Y'all talking about y'all understand me? Y'all don't understand what I'm going through. I gotta move my baby different places just on account of him? Y'all sitting up here arguing, going back and forth, letting him make a fool, trying to make a fool, he ain't made a fool of himself. When are y'all gonna wake up? When? Y'all up here, sitting up here like a bunch, a bunch of stones that ain't got no light. I'm talking about my daughter. I'm talking about my grandkids. He got an insurance policy out on my grandson who never stayed with him. That's not even his son. He got an insurance policy out on his cousin that's still missing. He got an insurance policy out on Kiki, which is still, when y'all gonna wake up? I am sick and tired of coming down here expressing how I feel about my kids to y'all who don't even give a care. Y'all argue back and forth, wants the mother, but when I say something, then it's a problem. Wake up. Y'all need to get that demon off, off that, off that stage.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is Diane Thornton. Next speaker is Mari Copany.
Okay, so here's a few things inside my mind. Back in October, the Fire Marshal cut back the amount of occupants that are allowed in the Center of Hope overnight. That choice puts our homeless population at risk as we enter into the winter season. I would hope the city is working with the Center for, for Hope to figure out how to find some space to make sure nobody's left out in the cold. Another risk that comes with more homeless people on the streets at night is we are going to see an increase in accidental fires in vacant homes while they are trying to keep warm. And that, and, and to add to that alarming spike in fires we have seen in the past week that's causing our first responders to overwork and putting their lives at risk, we already know there is at least one arsonist running around the streets who was responsible for the fire at St. Mark's Church. And now it seems there is at least one more out here that is causing massive fires. I stand that agenda tonight that we are getting more funds for Asbury for their food giveaway. That is great, let's give more funds to everyone that does food giveaways. Every single toy giveaway I've seen for the past two weeks has had lines of cars waiting hours before the event start time and they are running out of food before the events end time. The need in our community right now is existential, which leads me to my next point. The Salvation Army had to close its registration early for the holiday service. Other area groups are also seeing a huge increase in the number request. Right now, I am prepping for my 10th annual toy giveaway that will take place this year at the Cube at Brownell STEM Academy in the, in the first ward. Over the past nine years, I've given away over 40,000 toys to over 6,000 Flint area kids, all with very little support locally. This year, I need all hands on deck to be able to make this year successful. It's not about who belongs to what clique, it's about stepping up to be a village for the kids. And Councilwoman Candace, you have actually attended one of my Christmas events before, so you attended one of my Christmas events before you were on the council, so you know the scale of my events and how many kids we serve. Happy early Thanksgiving to everyone.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is Deion Freeman.
Good evening, City Council, Deion Freeman, First Ward resident. Just a couple questions with the 250384T, three allocation of ARPA funds to Asbury. Last time I was here, I think there was some problems as far as to what St. Mark got and how their program was set up. And you all wanted to go back and look over it again and try to set up, I guess, comparable guidelines. So, I don't know if I missed the meeting in between, but if you have more insight as to whether those issues were worked out or not. And then as far as the 250391.1T for the North Flint Food Market Cooperative, I'm a member-owner, I'm very proud to be one. I know it's taken some long years and to get this all up and going and we finally have the doors open. The North Flint Food Market Cooperative is a smaller entity. You have a lot of times when all of these larger entities, and not to name anybody because I don't want to put anybody's organization on point, we have no problem giving them 300,000. We don't have no problem giving them 500,000. We even have some, we didn't have problems giving millions of dollars. This is something that is a direct impact on our community's health, wellness, access to good food, and it's also providing jobs to people within our entire city. So, even though it's called the North Flint Food Market, people because they want to success, uh, support us and see us be successful are coming from Swart Street, are coming from Clio, all because they believe in the vision for our city. So, I hope as you're going forward and you're reevaluating this, it's, I see it reduced down to 150,000 and I'm not sure why. But, please give our local African-American business agencies the fair opportunity that we give all these other corporate major entities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Next, public speaker, Madam Clerk?
The next speaker is Chris Morris.
I'm also here representing and advocating for the appropriation of funds, ARPA funds to the North Flint Food Market and just kind of want to share a little bit about why I'm excited about the co-op. I am not a Flint resident. I've been blessed to be serving here as interim general manager. For the last five months, I've moved here full-time and, and have been working and supporting your community, you know, to help this wonderful grassroots organization, you know, realize the, the final leg of their, of their journey. You know, I work with food co-ops across the country, you know, so I have some perspective in that matter. And, you know, 10 to 15 years is a normal timeframe from, from the first time that the idea is shared and you start gathering momentum and building a coalition. And certainly in Flint, if it wouldn't have been for co-op, they actually would have been ahead of the curve and opened up in about nine years. You know, so, there were some setbacks. You know, the, the opening on November 12th was, was extremely exciting. You know, the emotions and the, the proud, the pride and the ownership that we see come through that door every day has, has been tremendous to be a part of. You know, the, the, you know, I was blessed to work with and hire, like I said, I'm not from Flint, but I worked with the board to hire a local general manager, then worked with that general manager to hire the leadership team and then worked with them to hire their support teams. You know, so, as Deion had mentioned, we, we probably have about 42 team members right now that are from throughout Flint. And, you know, I hear folks say that this isn't a good use of the city's funds, but, you know, it's a community-owned organization. I, I don't see a better use of these funds because it all stays local, you know, on this ongoing investment. And, you know, if you're shopping Aldi, that money is, you know, the profits are going to Germany. You shop in Walmart, it's going to Bentonville, Arkansas. You know, that's not the case with your, with your community-owned co-op. And, and as a member-owner, you have a vote, you know, one member, one vote. You can run for the board of directors and, and when there's profits, they'll, they'll get paid out as patronage dividends or reinvested back into the people and the, and the facility. I know I've heard from all the members or the council members here that they are support, supporters of the market and hope to see it succeed. Now, we have some abstaining votes and I would reiterate, I don't want anybody to return their membership. I want all of you to become members and support yours, the first, you know, community-owned grocery in Flint. I would alternatively say on the, you know, on the flip side, that if there is a conflict for financial, you know, conflict, that you can abstain from, from taking patronage dividends and then still, you know, support your market in your capacity as city council members in voting for these ARPA funds for us. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
The next speaker is April Stone.
I'm coming up here because of the water meter that was installed in my house and I never touched a thing until last week, a week before, a couple of weeks ago. And I turned it off to have some work done and turned it back on and it leaked all over my basement. I got up two days later, my carpet was flooded, my basement was flooded. I called the city and they told me that they had to come out and see the meter. And they came out and told me I gotta pay them $250 upfront before I can have the meter fixed. They've never seen, uh, the shut-off valve leak from the, from the handle. All they know how to do is stuff, uh, stuff it or something. I forgot what they call it now, right now, but all they know how to do is fix the, the nut. And other than that, I got to pay for it to be replaced. I've never, they, when they put it in there, evidently it wasn't no good because I've never touched the thing. They forced me to let them come out there and put the thing in. If I didn't let them come out there, they were gonna turn my water off. So, I've had three meters put in. This was the third meter, second meter. This would be three meters. I can't remember after 31 years. But wasn't nothing wrong with the meter. They said it couldn't read it downtown, so that's why they came and did it. I don't see why I gotta pay $250 for something that they put in that was damaged when they put it in evidently. I'm also coming down here to talk about a property, a land bank property I've been complaining about for the last 10 years, basically. But, the last five years, uh, there's, there's dumping and, and they, they didn't cut the grass till, but one time this year, they finally cut it two weeks ago. First time they cut it since two years ago. ago. And they left, they cut some of the, they left all the brush that they cut. They left everything. All they just piled it up and left all the stuff that's loaded and the blight and the dumping. It's still over there. When I was leaving to come down here, somebody was dumping some over there, and somebody staying in the house. Land banking, y'all need to make land bank do something about these properties. I also want to say something about being assaulted at Hurley Hospital by one of the nurses. And I was, I went in there for six pinch nerve, three pinch nerves in my necks. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Billy Dansler.
Good evening, Council. My name is Billy Dansler, and I reside in the Sixth Ward. So I guess I just have a couple of questions for you guys tonight, because I was sitting in the back and I was watching you guys vote for the president position tonight. So I guess this question is to the chair, or to the president, to Tanya, or the councilwoman in the Sixth Ward, to the attorney, and Davina. So why hasn't there been a full investigation on the councilman in the First Ward if he does not reside where he say he reside? Because he's making a choice for me, and I choose to stay in Flint. And he, from my understanding, resides in Mount Morris. So why is he, why does he continue to be in that seat if that is the case? And then also, I would like you guys to explain why you selected the candidate of your choice when it came to the presidency seat. Because if you review footage, you will see that the Seventh Ward behavior is not conducive to be the president. The Second Ward councilperson, her behavior is unhealthy. The Fourth Ward, Judy Priestley, her behavior is not healthy to be the president. And LaShawn and I, we talked in the back, or I'm sorry, councilwoman in the Third Ward, and we talked about, you talked about union, and I am in the union. And when it comes to union, we go by seniority. And right now, as a resident, I see that councilwoman Jerry Winfrey Carter of the Fifth Ward has the most seniority in this body right now. So why, if you can't figure out who you want, why can't we just be fair and go by seniority? Because the people that you guys have selected have shown that they are not presidential material, and they are embarrassing. Their behavior is embarrassing. From the councilwoman in the Seventh Ward, over talking to everybody and yelling and screaming, to the councilwoman in the Second Ward, trying to fight people, I mean, can you guys give us an explanation? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The final speaker for this meeting is Tanya Jones.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Jones. I'm here, I'm advocating for my son as part of the opioid crisis. First of all, this week, I've been going to do a medical pickup, not a medical pickup, a welfare check, to find my son. And I don't understand why the police didn't get a raise, because I did two of them. And Ms. Deb sat away with me, and I had to call Sheriff Mason. I greatly appreciate him. That's the only way it got served. Flint police didn't even, never even show up. So I understand why they got a raise, and it's already hard dealing with having a child part of the opioid crisis. And so when you call the police, I just feel like, you know, we waited three hours, three and a half hours. They never showed up. Sheriff, the sheriff department, as usual, even when I do a medical pickup, they wind up coming. And another thing, I, with me out here seeing the stuff that's going on with the opioid crisis, the way the system is set up is failing the people, because we go out here, we feed the homeless, and when you see people, I just see them, I'll be feeling like this could be my baby. That's my main concern. It could be my baby. So when we go feed them, the law, correlation also, we go out here and feed them, get put out the book bags. My main concern is, these people don't have nothing. They grateful for the smallest things. So they closed the Center of Hope, and when they closed the Center of Hope, I guess it was what, a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty people, now it's down to forty or sixty people? Where do you think those people going? Deb, they found, you know what I'm saying, they're down by the river. They're down at the church. When we leave from here, if y'all ride past, that's where they at. The opioid money, Leon, you got a hundred and fifty thousand. You know what I'm saying? That's for the people that's, my son is part of it. I don't know you, but my thing is, if you got a hundred and fifty, why don't you make sure these people, my son is part of this. You know what I'm saying? Would you make sure? That's all I'm asking. If that's what it go for, you deal with people to get out of prison. I don't know you, but my thing is, I'm advocating for my son. Those people out here don't have nobody advocating. No matter what, when it comes to my son, I'm not going nowhere. I'm here to stay. I thought my purpose was being a mother. My kids are thirty-four, thirty-one, and thirty. So guess what? It's been a blessing, because my son showed me that this is what's going on out here. They say Flint's strong. Flint is not strong. Flint is being done wrong. From the ARPA money, from the water money, to the opioid crisis money. So my thing is, make sure the people is done right. Judy, at sixteen fifty-five, the people are still there. They still there. If I got to go live or whatever to get help, I'm going to help those people. I got my son removed. That house is condemned. That water been cut off since last year. Go get them people out of there, or guess what? I'm going to go live. I have a hundred and seventy-one people. I'm not friendly. But guess what? I'm going to go out here and be a voice. Go get them people. That's your ward. Have a good night.
All right. So Madam Clerk, was that the final speaker?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you so much. So now it's time for a council response. Anyone would like to respond to the public?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. Ms. Stone, I need to follow back up with you. I know I had spoke with them, with them, they had come out to your house, and we're, you know, I did not get a response once they came back out from that department. But I will follow up on that to see where you had had, and you may also, I don't know if you filled out a damage claim, if you would need to fill that out. They did state that there was water in your basement, and so, in your lower level, once they went out. But I do not know. I know they were supposed to come back out. But I will send an email to see where that, is that in about waving, is it, I think you said two hundred and fifty, and I don't know, you can nod your head, is that to replace the valve on it? Okay. And so I will, I will see what we can, okay. Okay. And I will follow back up on that, because I don't have what, they didn't respond after they did come, the date, when they came out. In addition to St. Mark's, the question was, was anything done with Asbury? Asbury is on tonight. I will not be supporting it until we feed St. Mark's. If we can fix Asbury, St. Mark's is a year ago. Asbury has been on about three weeks, maybe. And we need to rescind it. I've sent this to the clerk and to the city attorney. This is moving slow. This is ridiculous, because the church is still feeding people out of their funds. And if we are feeding Asbury before St. Mark get their money, that makes no sense. And so we need to rescind it, is what I'm told. They haven't used any of the funds. I went to the food bank, you know, if we're going to get eight trucks or twenty-five trucks, it's a big difference. They have St. Mark Outreach Center, which is an in-good-standing nonprofit. We need to make sure everybody in Flint eats, period. To the Color Law Coalition, you ladies, you do such beautiful work, and I enjoy working with you. And to Ms. Janais, domestic violence is a problem, and it's difficult for me to sit here in my seat and pretend like it didn't happen, and what happened to your daughter.
All right. Any more? Anyone else for council response? Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Ms. Jones, I have followed up on sixteen fifty-five Ohio, and the problem is, is that people are willing to live there. It's got to be done legally to be closed down, and we can't seem to get that done within the city. But I am working on that to try to close it down, as well as to stop any state funding for rent to going to that property, because it is condemned, and there is no water, and that's been verified. So I am still working on it. It just takes time. And I appreciate that you have brought that to my attention, because I don't want anyone living in, it looks beautiful on the outside. I don't know what it looks like on the inside, but the building itself looked well-maintained. But it, I actually, when I drove by it the last time, there was somebody there, dressed nicely in a nice car, and I asked them if they were the landlord. And they said, no, they represent the landlord. And I said, well, you know this building is condemned, right? And he went, what? Who are you? And I said, I'm the councilwoman. He said, there's no water. This building is condemned. And he just ignored me. So I am following up on that, and I have written a letter to the state attorney general.
All right. All right. Anyone else for council response? All right. So seeing there's no one else for council response, I will go ahead and I will take my time. So I'd like to thank the North Flint Food Market for coming back out tonight. Hopefully we can get you over to the finish line, so we can show the store some support. And I also would want to highlight the fact that when I went, I have never, ever tasted strawberry lemonade Arnold Palmer. That thing was amazing. And so I only saw it at our North Flint Food Market, so I'm looking forward to going back and getting a couple more. So strawberry lemonade Arnold Palmer. Yes. I know, right? So, okay, so I just wanted to share that, and also thank Ms. Copney for her words at the lectern. And also, I would like to remind individuals that this is the Thanksgiving holiday. So I want to encourage you to support a lot of the great things that we have going on. We saw that they had the, that they had the food giveaway today at Mock Culinary. They had meals prepared. So I want to let you know that there are also other meals that are prepared, and they are waiting on you to come. We have something taking place at Burston on Christmas Day from noon to three, so make sure that you go out and just fellowship with the community, eating with dignity. That's very important. So thank you all so much for coming, and that is my time. So we'll go ahead and go on with the consent agenda. The pleasure of the body. Go ahead, Ms. Alamein. All right. Thank you. So the motion to support the consent agenda, and that will be with the approval of all minutes and with separations. Is there any support for that motion? Was that from Ms. Burns?
No. That was for the councilwoman in the Seventh Ward.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. So councilwoman support about a complement in the Seventh Ward. Any separations?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Two five zero three nine one point one. Reallocation of ARPA funds, North Flint Food Market Cooperative.
All right. Anymore?
Two, Madam Chair. Two five zero three eight four, Asbury. Two five zero three eight eight, and two five zero three eight three point one. Did we change that?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Three eight three point two?
Yeah. That's going to be the approval for obsolete property rehab exemption certificate for seven zero three South Grand Traverse Street.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of appointment two five zero three six four, resolution two five zero three nine zero, resolution two five zero three nine three, resolution two five zero three eight seven, and the second reading and enactment of ordinances for two four zero four five nine.
I have a separation.
Go ahead.
I would like to separate two five zero three six four dash T, the appointment to the, the reappointment to the Hurley Board.
Okay. So the appointment is separated. All right. So the consent agenda will consist of two five zero three nine zero, two five zero three nine three, two five zero three eight seven, and two four zero four five nine. All right. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I also want to point out that the consent agenda also includes placing on file the petitions and communications, of which there is one on your agenda today.
All right. Thank you. All right. Roll call.
Mr. Alamein is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no?
The vote is eight yes, zero no. The consent agenda passes. So now we're on to the first separation, and it is for appointment two five zero three six four. The pleasure of the body.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we move two five zero three six four dash T to council, well, approving. Make a motion to approve it. We are in council. Make a motion to approve three five zero three six four dash T.
All right. So there's a motion to approve appointment two five zero three six four. Any support?
Support.
Support about a complement in the Sixth Ward. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Through you to Clerk Donahue. Clerk Donahue, I am trying to find out, first, we need a list of all of the Hurley Board appointments. And I wanted to find out, I know that this is a reappointment, but also, how many reappointments, how many people on that board need to be reappointed? And how many new board members did we appoint for this year? And I want to find out if Mr. Phil Schultz, if he's still serving on the board.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will try to get this information to you either late tomorrow or sometime Wednesday.
Because we have not, we have not received any resolutions for appointments for Mr. Schultz's reappointment, right, to replace him, have we?
I believe there was one, but I don't know if it was postponed indefinitely. I know it wasn't voted on, and...
It was postponed. We didn't vote on it, right?
I don't think so. I think it was postponed indefinitely, but I will double-check.
We didn't have anything to replace him, right?
Nothing that has been adopted, no.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to find out, now do we have Mr. Brian, Dr. Brian Nolan? Is he in the audience tonight?
I don't think so, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Okay. All right. A yeol. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Anyone else in the first row?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'm sorry, Ms. Winfrey Carter. Did you ask about residency? Because Hurley is, we have to have Flint residents, so can you add? So can you add residency onto this to see who is a Flint resident? Because I know that this reappointment, they're, they're listing their office, or their doctor's office as the address. So I want to make sure that we're in compliance with residency because residency is, is part of, of that. So Madam Clerk, can you add residency on that request that Ms. Winfrey Carter made? And I'll yield. Thank you.
Yes.
Is that your time, Mr. Pfeiffer? All right. Anyone else in the first round? All right. Anyone else in the second round? All right, seeing there's no one else in the second round, we'll go ahead and call for the vote for appointment two five zero three six four, Brian Nolan to the Hurley Board of Managers. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alameen?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, one no.
The vote is eight yes, one no. That appointment passes. So now we're on resolution two five zero three eight four. The pleasure of the body. Go ahead. Sorry, Ms. Priestley.
I make a motion to approve two five zero three eight four.
All right. Motion to approve. Any support? Support about a compliment in the eighth ward. All right. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
My point of contention, I believe everyone should eat. I think it's embarrassing at this time if we're approving Asbury before we get St. Mark's. St. Mark's has been on here for over an entire year. Through you two, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, I sent the email to you and the city attorney. What is the process so that we can do them both at the same time, Asbury and St. Mark, that we need to do to get these passed so we can move on and get this behind us?
I'm going to defer to the attorney because I believe this was the situation where the resolution was already adopted for one, and there was a question about the contract. So I'm going to defer to Attorney Gurley on that question.
What's your request?
Didn't we pass St. Mark's?
We did.
So what's the contention with St. Mark's?
The point is, instead of them getting 25 trucks, they get eight. And instead of going to, because we had, it was people, it was politics over people then, and it's a problem with the food bank. So the food bank, when I met with them, stated they needed to just go straight to the outreach. They are now a help center. And so getting the money, it would be over 3,000 per truck. And so how it's given, we needed to go to St. Mark directly, not to food bank. And it's how that contract was written. No one else has got a contract written like this that they deal with, not one single person. And so it is stopping and stalling, and they're still serving this community. And so when we had spoke before, it was supposed to be, they stated, rescind it. St. Mark is not acting on it. The food bank is just saying, if we can rescind it, they haven't used any of it. And reissue, do a, put a motion to afford a class, another one, and have it just like Asbury. It goes straight to Asbury. They've, they're in good standing. The food, we, we know that they're serving, they've been serving. And the issue is, and it's getting caught up, which to me, it seems a lot of things are getting caught up. You know, let's, let, let's get this taken care of. This has only been on, what, three weeks? Maybe four? And St. Mark has been a year? I know certain people don't like St. Mark, but it's the people. The people in the community, and there's a need. That line wraps all the way down and around back to King School, and it stays full with families that need to be fed, people who need assistance, and majority are seniors. So I don't know what the holdup is, but we need to fix this. Attorney Gurley, how can we do this?
Through the chair, this is a carryover item from your last, I believe, regular meeting where you wanted to find out if you could rescind the contract that St. Mark, the city, and the food bank had signed. So it, it's only been since your last council meeting, your regular council meeting, for this item to have the changes made. So under your council rules, rule 23.1, you can rescind a contract, well, a resolution because you approved a resolution to enter into a contract. Since there's not written notice to your fellow council members, you'd have to have two-thirds vote to do that. With written notice, you would only need a simple majority.
What is written, what are you, written notice? You need?
Well, you would need to have some kind of posting that says you want to take up this item during one of your council meetings.
So I sent, I know if we send it to, if I send it, I, I cannot, yeah, I cannot send it to everyone because then that would be a violation.
No, you would send it to the clerk.
I did send it to, I did.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know if the notice has been posted. I don't know because I've been in, away from the office. But without notice, you would need two-thirds majority vote to rescind the contract.
Okay. So can we put a motion on the floor? I've sent notice to the clerk to rescind it.
I mean, it has to be by vote. So if you sent notice to the clerk, that notice would have to be posted, and then you would need a majority vote. If it has not been posted, you need two-thirds.
So we need the clerk to make a posting?
Under your council rules, yes.
And where she's supposed to post it at?
The same way you would post for any agenda.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
One second. Go ahead, Ms. Pfeiffer.
So through you to the city attorney, we, we're rescinding the St. Mark to, is that what you're, you're, so we would have to rescind the St. Mark and then change the language and approve it again? Is that what you're, is that what you're implying?
Yes. It's a, it's a contract that's already been executed. So what you're doing is rescinding your previous action. So.
What is your request?
My request is, do they know, does the speaker know that the contract has not been signed by St. Mark with the food bank?
No, I, I wouldn't know that. I'm just looking at the contract that was executed by the parties to the resolution. So under the resolution that council approved, it included the food bank, it included the city, and it also included, let me see here.
So, so what language would we need to do to reapprove that with different, like, do you, do you have that? So if we made the motion today to rescind, and we got two-thirds to rescind, do you have the la, the language that we could verbally do that to reapprove a different one tonight?
It would be best for it to be in writing. So under the charter.
Well, but you just said that we could do it by two-thirds.
There's two actions here. Okay. So the first action is to rescind the resolution that approved the contract.
Okay.
Action one. Action two is, you would need to have a resolution to approve a new contract. So your res, under the charter, you all move by writing a resolution or an ordinance. So if you want to take a recess and somebody drafts up a resolution, if you vote by two-thirds to rescind the contract resolution.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Are we able to just do the, are we able to rescind the resolution tonight and then just have the resolution to approve on the next council meeting?
Absolutely.
Soon as we get out of work.
All right. So the clock, the clock's going on.
All right. I, I yield.
All right. Anyone else in the first round? All right, seeing that there's no one else in the first round, I will make sure to take my time. So I had a conversation with the food bank to find out exactly what was happening. And so what I found out, because I heard numbers 3,000 and 1,000 being thrown tomorrow, and I found that as far as these trucks go, it costs $1,000 for the truck to deliver the goods. That's the driver, the maintenance of the truck, the cooling, just for the truck to deliver the goods with donated food. And so that's where the $1,000 come from. So the food bank expressed that when, that the trucks, the food inside is valued at $3,000. So that is the value of the food. And so as the way the resolution was written, and again, this is per Will at the food bank, he expressed that, that it was written, so St. Mark are not, they are not to get donated food, but the food bank must purchase food exclusively for St. Mark. And so what that is doing, that is getting rid of the free food donation and the $1,000 delivery. And so I asked, what could we do in order to keep the same thing going with the $1,000 trucks pulling up with the free food? And he said that what will fix this in the contract would be to amend it to say, to support St. Mark's account for future food deliveries. So we won't have to go out and purchase new food. So in the contract, it was speaking of purchasing new food for St. Mark. He said eliminating that and, and replace that with, to support St. Mark's account for future food deliveries. So what that'll do, that'll take the burden off of purchasing food for St. Mark, which is causing their bill to go up and the less people to get served. So this way, they will be able to get the 25 trucks for $1,000 apiece because the food on the truck will be donated, and they can make 25 trips to St. Mark. So that is what I was told, that if we just amend that to support St. Mark's account for future food deliveries, that it'll just straighten everything out instead of just allocating the food to St. Mark. I mean, excuse me, the, the money to St. Mark. And we can also do the same thing with Asbury to support Asbury's account for future food deliveries instead of. So go ahead.
Are we able to get that in writing? Would them just not verbally tell me that? Are we able to get that in writing?
Absolutely. Yep. So I will, I would definitely reach out to Will so we can put that on paper so the entire body can see. Because I, I had some concerns when I heard that they would be in charge three times amount. Yeah, that didn't sound too fair. So, and again, and I'm totally on board for us going the same route with Asbury. All right. So that is my time. So we'll go into the second round. Anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I'm glad that you were concerned. I actually went there and met with all of them. And so that price, what we need to do, we cannot, through you to the chair, we still have to, you can't change the writing. You're stating, we can't amend it, anything because it's already been passed. Is that correct? Are you stating now she's saying we can amend it? I mean, it's the same thing. I mean, any changes would be amending the contract that we already passed.
Through the chair to councilperson, the sixth ward, under your council rules, that is the way you would need to do it. You have to rescind the original action.
So we, right, so we have to rescind it, not amend it?
You have to rescind it.
Okay.
Yes.
So then we cannot do it as the councilperson, the second ward, stated was to amend it. So we need to do the two actions.
But, but here's the thing, is that I am simply speaking of the MOU that the city signed with the food bank in care of St. Mark. I don't know what agreement St. Mark has with the food bank. That's not a contract that I've seen. I'm simply looking at this MOU contract that sub recipients receive.
That's all that, that there is. And I know that second ward didn't see it because they're now a help center. And so if she's stating to amend it, and you're stating if we need to change that, it needs to be rescinded.
Correct.
Okay. So then we have to rescind it then and do, it was to, so put the, what's it, put the motion on the floor.
We got to ask, we have to ask.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right. Okay. And we can always bring that back, though. So, and, and for clarity for people, basically, with that MOU, it was telling the food bank that they had to grocery shop for St. Mark. And dealing with different grocers and different things, they're able to get food out of store, which may almost meet the shelf life, or fresh foods, or if there's food that's overbought, that they weren't entitled to some of those and government subsidies. And that drove up their price. And so if we have to rescind it, we have to follow the proper way according to the city attorney that we can amend it. And it needs to go, just like Asbury, to St. Mark. And they have a, in good standing with their food, with their St. Mark outreach, which is separate from the church. We should not be biased and show a difference. This is feeding the community. So we all eat, is how I see it.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat. Are you on the floor?
Yes, just one other.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So just under this MOU, it just simply says, "The city agrees to provide the sub recipient a total not to exceed $25,000 to be used to provide for greater food access at St. Mark's Community Outreach Center, with funding being necessary due to the negative financial impacts the organization has experienced during the COVID-19 emergency." That's, that's the scope of what the city contract states. Anything else has to be negotiated among those other parties. This is a standard sub recipient agreement that we have.
Request for information.
Thank you. What, what is your request, Ms.?
Is it, has it always been the same? Or is this the same stipulation it has been prior? You know, every time they get food, every time they get money issued? So what's the difference, I guess, now with them letting the food bank do it versus them getting the funds in their hands? What's the difference?
I think it's.
Why is it different? What's, what's going on that they can't get the truck for the $1,000? 25 trucks for, $25,000?
Through the chair, I would not be privy to that. It is how whoever drafted the resolution drafted it, right? So if you wanted to go directly to the center, the St. Mark Church, you have to draft your reso that way. But based on the way that was drafted, it went to the, the food bank in care of St. Mark. So.
Go ahead, Council Mashat.
So I hear what y'all are saying about St. Mark. I've already told y'all, I am committed to, whether it's rescinding this resolution however, to get them correct. This resolution that we're supposed to be talking about right now is two five zero three eight four dash T, which is the reallocation of our funds for Asbury United Methodist Church Food Access and Food Systems Support. So we should be discussing Asbury and whether or not Asbury is about to get this funding. This is what this agenda item is supposed to be about. St. Mark will be fine because the minute we move from this agenda item, we can then put a motion on the floor to rescind the resolution. So we need to deal with the agenda item that is in front of us because what's in front of us is not St. Mark. I yield.
All right. Anyone else in the, in the second round? Ms. Johnson? Would you like the floor? Okay. All right. Anyone else in the second round? Go ahead, Ms. Alameen.
Is there anyone here that can speak to the, to their program from United Methodist Church?
All right. I guess not. All right.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Point of information, does the speaker know that the councilperson in the fourth ward can answer questions you may have?
Alright.
She left, and then, um, I asked her earlier, she didn't, she was kind of limited on what she, the information. So that's why I was looking to see if there's someone out here.
Alright, so is, is that your time? Alright, not a problem, so, um, anyone else in the second round? Alright, so seeing that there is no one else in the second round, we are going to call for the vote for the reallocation of ARPA funds to Asbury United Methodist Church. So roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson.
Um, at this time, no.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes, everybody should just vote yes so we can fix it.
Alright, I'm rescinding my vote, I'm sorry.
You, you have to, um, wait.
I gotta wait, okay.
Uh, you, you're fine, you just have to...
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Madam, Madam Chair, I mean, excuse me, Madam Clerk, the councilwoman in the third ward would like to change her vote.
Johnson?
Madam Clerk, I would like to rescind my vote to you guys, okay? Thank you.
I'm sorry, you want to change your vote to yes?
Yeah.
The vote is nine yes, zero no?
The vote is nine yes, zero no, that resolution passed.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Michelle.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we rescind the resolution that we originally had for St. Mark.
Support.
Alright, it has been, uh, supported by, what is that, Ms. Priestley or Ms. Johnson? Alright, Ms. Priestley, supported by Ms. Priestley.
Uh, through the chair, I, I would offer that you may need to include whether, uh, any fees have been dispersed. So, if, say for example, if, uh, the church has already received like $5,000 worth of goods, and you would need to deduct that because they were granted 25,000, right? So somebody's got to pay whatever it's been...
Councilwoman Priestley, can you rescind your second?
I will rescind, I'll take back my second.
And I will, Madam Chair, I want to take back my motion and then, Madam Chair, I would like to make a, a different motion.
Alright, so you, so you took back your support, rescind your motion, so what is your motion?
Hold on, I think somebody said, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms., Madam Clerk.
Um, I want to point out that the resolution that was adopted for St. Mark also allocated $25,000 for Christian Love Faith Center. So if you rescind the resolution, that would also take away the funds to Christian Love Faith Center.
That, that, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll rescind the entire resolution.
Um, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the resolution that gave St. Mark $25,000, um, to the food bank, um, and I would like to... What's the words I'm looking for?
Go ahead.
What, what is, what is your request?
I think maybe we, for official, you can get the resolution number so that we're deadly accurate.
Absolutely, Madam Chair, I'd ask, I'd like to ask for a five-minute recess.
Alright, so there's a five-minute recess without objection.
Yes.
No, it needs to go straight to them because I'm never...
Yeah.
I'm trying to see if you want to be heard so bad.
Who you talking to?
Got two minutes and forty some seconds.
Listen, man. I'm going back to the, um, I wish it was one of them that postponed the, the voting. But I think they just, they just doing that, like, they agree on everything. They agree on everything, and you see, you seen LaShawn voting for Liddell, right? But you see Candace telling her how to vote. They agree on everything, so this little bullshit about these two over here voting for Candace and these two over here, or two or three voting for Liddell, that's just smoke and mirrors. To keep them same two in power for another year. That's my, that's what I'm thinking, what you think about that?
I will sue them because they know they're supposed to pick somebody.
But they know, they kind of know that, they kind of know that they not gonna get sued. I think they kind of know that the other four is not gonna, you know, take them to court.
But I know all these people is connected, ain't that the guy from Latin X?
Yes, that is the guy, it look like it, it look like it, I can't, I don't know if it is or not.
Allegedly, if it is, these, all these people is connected, yep.
Do a poll, what we doing, a poll, oh Stanley? Do a poll on what, president, vice president, do we think, we did a poll, like, we did a poll and the poll said, um, most of the people on here, I think it was like eighty-seven percent thought that they, they just playing in our face. Not the four, you know, just the other ones. Because they agri, they agree on everything. And now they trying to create this little Candace-Liddell beef. Hmm, it's just something, something's not sitting right with that. I know, I know Sheldon propping up Candace, that's only because I believe Candace gonna make a run for state rep. Half of me believes that. Other half of me believe that he gonna run Cincy as long as he can. Because Sheldon like that money, so, uh, what you think about that?
Listen, they nearly got this thing tied up, it's such a clusterfuck. I'm just being honest, it's like, it's like the fuckery one, uh, and the, and the lady that's running the war, I mean, Vina, y'all gotta watch the Vina. The Vina got all this, this mess going on right now, but it works for the mayor because he still get what he want.
He do, he do end up getting what he want. And it's like, you know, it's not about, it wasn't a big thing to me about Candace telling LaShawn how to change her vote, because shit, they all getting along now. We get, we, we getting what we asked for, they all, they all voting for the same shit. Even after they asked the questions, like, you know, Lurbe Construction, they was going to give that money to Lurbe Construction, it's just... You know what you got to do, okay? So, asking the questions for what? And this man walking around with just... He has no... He don't, he just don't care. He just don't care.
They gave him another five minutes. I'm looking at the clock.
Oh, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Leon just walking around there chilling. He just really walking around chilling.
I thought, hold on, we gotta meet up.
It just seem, it's just too weird, it's seem like the fucking Twilight Zone. I can hear me. Well, they know, they know how I feel, hell, it do feel like the Twilight Zone. Everybody up there just getting along and it's just weird.
See what Alan Light said, most politicians resign after allga, Alan Litch, my bad. Alan Litch, most politicians resign. After allegations, but not in Flint.
In Flint, most people go to jail when you run for office and you don't even live in that city. And now their house done burnt down. I'm like, did I just really hear that tonight or am I tripping? So you telling me the house out in Mount Morris that Leon said he stayed in, that done burnt down too? A lot of things burning around him.
What's up, Tasha, man?
Shit. This is crazy.
Yeah, that do look like the guy from Latin X, yep, they talking about the... Said the garage burnt up.
Oh, just the garage burnt up? The shit burned down in the corner of the house. Just to make it unlivable. Just, you know, watching it, you've been watching it for a long time, that's weird, that's suspicious.
Stanley, you might as well get ready to go to court. There ain't no productive coming. The Vina just playing a game, was hoping that you'll forget about it.
Right, but...
The Vina banking on that 2026.
They should have demanded some type of... He couldn't get the votes for no special hearing. I know the resolution didn't go through, that, um, Jerry wanted him to resign. Shit, I would have talked about it, I would have figured something talking about it, but they did. Resolution, shit. He, he walking up and down the road.
Alright, that's our five minutes, wanna go ahead and, and come to our seats now.
Michigan, yes, do state law apply in Flint, Michigan?
I'm in agreement.
With the constitution apply, do the city charter apply, only when they wanted to.
Yeah, so, yeah, so yeah, we probably just handle this at the, at the other meeting, at the next meeting.
Then that's when they apply. Let, let something burn that I stay. It be more take me to work because they gonna swear I burnt it up, let's go. Here we go.
Alright, so that is our five-minute recess and... Go ahead.
By five minutes so that our clerk can finish, um, typing up the resolution.
Support.
Okay, so another five-minute recess have been ordered without objection.
Back on.
He could have just... I don't even know what to say, though. I'm just chilling. Well, ain't too much to say, this is pretty much how it's gonna be into 2026. They gonna keep playing with them, them council votes. They gonna keep moving it to the end, and I already said a president, they didn't already know it works. So now they gonna, they gonna be the confused five up there. They gonna be confused all the way until they get out of office. Because that looks much better when you go up and speak before a crowd or President Liddell Lewis, Vice President Candace Muschat. Yeah, I think they playing in our face with that one, I think they beefing. Who is that they let, they walk right up to the ropes? They attack her.
Uh, it's going, yes, St. Mark, but the money will go to St. Mark's, um, St. Mark.
But damn, she going to talk to him. She's not scared, Lord have mercy.
Who is that?
The girl from the, from the TV 12, that's why she going down to do an interview. She'll go do an interview now. She gonna get up there and talk about how much she loved the North Side pride and food access to the North Side and they need to pass this resolution, girl, shut up. Where's Reggie at? Reggie didn't come back tonight to, let him know, see how the vote was gonna turn out. Ricky, where Reggie at? He gone back on vacation again? Yeah, Reggie, Reggie stay on vacation. What's up, Uncle Carl? Uncle Carl, you think Reggie on vacation? Reggie then went back on vacation. He sent his menu, he sure did. He better had sent his ties and offering again. Oh, I forgot, he ain't know the bathroom. That's why he said, just call him Reggie. Reggie's on vacation with the popcorn maker. They say you ain't right. They did say that popcorn makers, $80,000. They said that was gonna be some of the best popcorn he ever tasted in his life. I don't think they even got it up there, we ain't seen no popcorn, like... Candy candies. I ain't seen no popcorn maker right up there. Usually, you was supposed to put there in film. I don't feel right going in there right now. I gotta go when it get real cold, sophomore ski, man. Be like, that's that girl. So, I stay in Flint.
Reggie go. Popcorn makers at the Kennedy Center.
I like how they say, oh, I'm an owner of it. They all up there acting like they owners, my put down there ten men, who you think gonna get their money back first? Like how they running around. We get like ten and twenty thousand and stuff at the end of the year. Like, some of this stuff is crazy.
Everybody need to get power for some free, but not...
Yeah, like, this is, is it still called a black-owned co-op grocery store? I ain't mad at, you know, getting the help, because we didn't help so many other people, you know what I'm saying, but...
As the guy said, they didn't play in our faces tonight, Michigan.
They been doing it for the whole year, they been, their whole ten years since Liddell, I've been running council, they been playing.
Uncle Carl showed us right, overplay for the underlay. He came down there. And when he had to say drop a few tears at the ribbon cutting. And bounce.
Grassroots that got ten million dollars, make that make sense. Where's the grassroots that the owner not here? He still denying that he stay in Flint. Well, he saying he stay here, but yet he got a nice beautiful house in South Carolina.
That's their vacation home now.
Fact, LaDale got one in PG. Prince George County, that is. A place where they don't even want her at.
Maybe she gonna go back and say she been better enough. She been council president for four years.
They gonna look at the video and say, are you crazy? But they'll know she done.
A lot of people like me, that's what she gonna say.
You see this, family, you see what happened? They tricked them into pass the previous resolution, but now they making this. Confusing about Saint Mark's. Keep talking about pass nothing. Mm-mm, they smell alright, as Ma used to say, there's the flies in the soup.
All right, the five minute recess is now over. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alan Litch, yep, you see what happened? Tricked them to pass the previous. They confused about Saint Mark.
Mr. Alamein. Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Priestley.
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Present.
Ms. Burns.
Present.
Ms. Mashat.
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Present.
Mr. Jarrett.
Present.
You have nine members, nine members present.
Oh, we have nine members present. All right, so we are still on resolution two five zero three eight, oh, no, pass that, excuse me. We're on the other motion. So where do we stand in terms of getting that prepared?
Madam Chair, according to our rules and Attorney Gurley, if you could, through you, through the chair to Attorney Gurley. If you could please read the rule and, um. Just the rule number and then the actual rule, because according to our rules, there are a couple of steps we have to take here. And so I just would like for our, our rule to be read on record before we move forward with further motions.
Through the chair, um, the rules that, uh. Councilwoman in the seventh ward is referring to our rule twenty three point one. Which is an action to rescind, repeal, or null a previous action. May be by resolution unless the previous action is an ordinance. Action to repeal the ordinance may only be by ordinance. And then rule twenty three point two, notice of intention to rescind a previous action. Must be given to the clerk at least two days prior to the meeting at which. Resolution or ordinance rescinding or repealing a prior action is introduced. However, council may vote by two thirds of council members elect to waive that notice.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. So for what we are trying to accomplish this evening, according to rule twenty three point two, in order for us to amend. Um, twenty five, resolution two five zero two six six point one, which is the resolution we are attempting to amend. We first have to, uh, do a wave of notice and the body has to vote on that. And so I would like to make a motion that we, uh. Waive the notice for, for our amendment to resolution two five zero two six six point one.
All right, any support?
Support.
All right, supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward. Any discussion? Any discussion, second round? All right, so now we will call for the vote. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no.
The vote is nine yes, zero no. So that motion passes.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
Thank you. Um, and then, uh, the second thing that we need to do is the amendment to exclude portion, the portion of. Resolution two five zero two six six point one related to Saint Mark. Um, Saint Mark Outreach, Saint Mark Missionary Baptist Church Outreach Community Center. Minus any of the expenses already incurred. That will have to come to us on the floor as an add-on and the clerk does have that. Um, and so the, the add-on simply states what I just said, and that is that we are, that resolution, which would be add-on number one. Is amending the resolution two five zero two six six point one, which originally included both Saint Mark and. Chris, Faith Love Christian Center. What we're doing is making amendment to that to exclude the portion related to Saint Mark. Um, the twenty five thousand that was going to them minus any expenses already incurred. And that would be add-on number one. So we.
So we're not rescinding anything?
We are making a, a motion to exclude.
So do you have that in writing?
It's the add-on that the clerk cast.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, do you have that so I can see that?
I am still drafting this resolution, so I'm going to ask that you, uh. Continue with the rest of the agenda and I will print these copies as soon as I am done typing it.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to postpone this discussion to the.
Add-on, is add-on number one, Judy?
Add-on number one.
To table it?
To table, table, to postpone it till the end of the, um, of the agenda.
Okay, any support? Support by the councilman in the first ward.
No, no. No.
So, so it's been supported by the councilman in the first ward.
Can you withdraw your support?
Wait, wait a minute, Ms. Mashat. Uh, y'all need another recess?
No, you can't move it to the end because she put the leadership vote at the end.
No, 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 correct, correction.
You didn't put it at the end?
Correction, wait a minute.
Okay, I got you.
Excuse me.
All right, you're good.
Ladies, so just want to be clear, Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, she put it for next meeting, not at the end. Okay, um. So you rescind that? So you don't want?
No, I don't want to rescind it, it's fine.
Oh, so you want to go with that?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so I'm supported by the councilman in the first ward, uh. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Make it the end of resolutions.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Vote is nine yes, zero no.
Vote is nine yes, zero no, so that will be, um, tabled to the end of the meeting. So now we are moving on to resolution two five zero three nine one point one, tell you of the body.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
I make a motion to approve resolution two five zero three nine one point one, which is the reallocation of our funds for the North Flint Food Market Cooperative.
All right. Supported by the councilman in the first ward.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
So as I've stated before, and I'm gonna continue to state it, I, I really feel that, um. A new store, I don't care who it is, what it is, should not be opened with city funds. Thank you. I'm going to vote no on this as usual.
All right, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
As I stated before, I will, um. Be voting to abstain because there's a conflict of interest. I am a member of the North Flint Food Market. So being a member, and I don't care, um, if it's, if it's not financial or whatever. I am a member and it's a conflict of interest for me. And so I will abstain my vote. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jarrett.
I also want to state my intention to abstain. As I also, and many in my family are member owners, so the. Conflict of interest arises for me as well as for my family, so I will be abstaining.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing that there was no one else, I'll go ahead and take my time. Um, so again, as I stated, I stand in full support of the market. And I heard, hear you, Ms. Priestley, when you say no store should open with city money. I mean, but we are about to approve a, a restaurant that's opening with support, um, of the other funds. So that, that, that sound kind of like, you know, like a conflict, so you don't want them to have city fund. But we're voting for, without problem. You can see how much you support them, and they're opening up with other support as well. Through the committee that you sit on, so, um, just wanted to highlight that. And, and say again, the food market I support, just want to make sure that we are doing things equitably. So, um, let's go ahead and call for.
Madam Chair, second round.
Okay, thank you. So let's call for the second round.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
There's a difference between a grant of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and an Oprah that reduces property taxes. And I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Anyone else in the second round? All right, so seeing there's no one else, we'll go ahead and call for the vote for the reallocation of our fund for the North Flint Food Cooperative. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
I abstain.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I abstain.
The vote is five yes, two no, two abstentions?
The vote is five yes, two no, and two abstention. That resolution passes. So now we're moving on to resolution two five zero three eight eight. With the pleasure of the body.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two five zero three eight eight dash T, which is the Metron Finder LLC Purchase of Water Meters Water Service Center.
Any support? Support by the councilman in the first ward. Any discussion in the first round? Any discussion in the second round? All right, seeing there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
The vote is six yes, three no?
The vote is six yes, three no. Resolution two five zero three eight eight passes. So now we're on to resolution two five zero three eight three point two. It's the pleasure of the body.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two five zero three eight three point two. Which is the approval of obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certi- certificate application, seven oh three South Grand Traverse Street.
All right, any support?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman in the fourth ward. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, to you two, the owners of the, um. I only see, is it one left? Yeah, if you could come to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I had a, a good conversation, uh, with you, and I just want people to see or to hear what it is that you're doing.
Sure, um, we are rehabilitating a property that we bought, um, in twenty fifteen. Um, we are basically starting a pizza restaurant themed on the sit-down strike. Um, we're really interested in that history and we wanted to pay homage to that movement. Um, and so we're also rehabilitating the existing structure, which was originally built as a home, so we're kind of opening it up. So that it still feels like a home when you're in it, um, and, and gives that atmosphere. Um, and so that's the, I guess, thirty second, um, overview.
So we'll be utilizing the first and second floor or?
We are utilizing the first floor for public restaurant space, but, um. Due to fire suppression costs, the second floor was, it's limited to office. Um, uh, if we wanted to do, we looked into doing business on the second floor, but it could have potentially. Resulted in having to put in an elevator and then fire suppression, and both of those were cost prohibitive to, um, the development.
So what is your target date for opening?
We hope to open within six months of being able to start construction, um, and so we're just waiting on this because we. We cannot pull a building permit until the, the Oprah's been approved, and so we're just kind of.
I like that little.
We're hoping to start at the beginning of the year though, so hopefully by June.
So did I hear correct that you did get a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from MEDC?
We, um, we have a letter of interest for the Build My Community Grant Program, which is a cost share, so. Our investment's gonna be about, um, the, the, the total cost of the project's about a million, and so there's a cost share for about two fifty, so.
Is it that expensive to do that?
Yeah, the development's about seven hundred and then another few hundred for just the startup cost for the restaurant, yeah. It's a, so things are, yeah, the, the, this grant is what makes it cash flow. It, it, without that grant, it, it, it doesn't pencil out.
So you need this grant to, that grant helps you to open it up, and you are on Grand Travers?
Yes, ma'am.
What are your cross streets?
Third.
Third.
So we're kitty corner from the Cornwall Building, um, and across from where Sergeant's title was, I, I think it's, uh, security building now or something.
What about parking for you?
We have, um, an excess of forty parking spaces. The lot itself is a third of an acre. Um, and then, um, city code allows us to use street parking, and both Grand Travers and Third Street also have on-street parking adjacent to our, our, uh, our building.
And I know you want all those parking spots.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I wish you the very best luck, um, in your endeavors, and I just wanted people to hear and that you're having a, a pizza in. I was like a pizza and pub, and you're gonna have IPAs there, which are, um. Describe, cause people, a lot of people don't know what IPA is. Um, what's IPA?
Uh, India Pale Ale.
I like IPA.
It was a beer that actually developed for the, um, for the transit. The hops kept it, um. Kept it stable for a longer period, so they developed the hoppy brew, so it could, it could la- last on the trading chips.
So good luck, and I will be supporting this, so thank you.
Thank you.
I give up my time.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Pfeiffer.
So, um, if this was an IPA brewery, I would be a no vote, a hundred percent. Uh, I can't stand this stuff. It's kind of, it's kind of horrible aftertaste. Um, but you said something, so, um. If you don't get the two fifty, cause that two fifty isn't guaranteed at this point, correct?
It, basically it's contingent on the Oprah, but we plan to proceed if we don't get it, but our timeline, I'm gonna have to. Circle back and figure out, um, different funding options, because. I mean, it's really what's allowing us to kind of like move at a, a quick pace. Other than that, I'll have to kind of scale back and probably try to do a lot of stuff myself.
Because you're, the, the, my concern is. We grant this. And for some reason that money falls through, and then the process, the prog- the project never gets off, off the ground floor. But yet we reduced taxes on the property for thirty years and, and it's. And nothing ever happens to it.
I believe if I don't have the project completed by October thirty first of twenty twenty six, the, that the Oprah would go away.
Is that a true statement, Madam, or, uh, through you to the city attorney? They have a deadline to, what, to get a C of O?
Um, to complete that project by December thirty first of next year. To complete that project by December 31st of next year.
What triggers the, the project completion? Is that the CFO? Is that the, is that, what, what, what exactly triggers completion?
Well, normally it would be substantial completion. So, I mean, more than I would say, I would say the majority of the project being completed.
So it's not contingent on them actually opening?
Well, it's not contingent, but.
We're not saying that, that substantial completion is them ever opening, right?
I think your question is referencing whether or not that Oprah would be in effect if they don't open.
Right.
Right? So I'd have to look further at the statute, but they need to have the project completed by December 31st of 2026. So.
October 31st. Okay. I just like, I would like to know, Madam, if you can look into see what that is. If we're not saying that completion, like people have different terms for completion. I mean, if it doesn't ever open as a restaurant, then I guess that would be my concern. Not saying that you won't, but things happen, life happens in everywhere else where I don't want the city residents to be on the hook for discounting these taxes for 30 years if, if, if it never opens as you intended. Okay. I yield.
Anyone else in the first round? Or anyone else in the second round? So seeing there's no one else, we will go ahead and call for the vote. Thank you so much. All right. So this is for Resolution 250383.2. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Isn't that him? Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Vote is nine yes, zero no?
All right, the vote is nine yes, zero no. All right. So we are at, we are circling back to the resolution that was being typed up by the clerk.
Madam Chair, if I just have a couple of minutes and I will print this and ask the attorney to look it over before giving it to council. So I am asking for a five-minute recess, just so I can print this and let her look at it.
Okay, thank you. So five-minute recess without objection.
Yeah.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Can we, can we rescind the five-minute recess and do the special?
Leave and he said he got to go.
Order for this meeting?
There's a special order.
Checking out.
Oh, okay, sure. I will rescind the five-minute recess so we can go.
They got the votes for that. But did, am I tripping? Did I hear 30-year?
So this is a special.
I'm looking for now, like.
Into the floor by me. Communication from the special master.
Cause I'm reading what somebody said.
And this contact was initiated on behalf of council leadership led by the vice president. To invite her to our space to answer some of the questions from the resident. And so she couldn't make it. However, she did, was gracious enough to answer a couple of questions that the residents wanted to know. Questions on the record. And also I have copies up for the colleagues if they would like to see it and also. And so this is a direct correspondent. This is in Ms. Deborah Green's own words. Those two key questions that a lot of residents have been asking.
All you gotta do.
They wanted to know what was taking so long and they wanted to know when would the residents receive their money. And so I wanted to dispel a lot of false information that's going out and wanted to hear.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. The timer is not going.
Okay, thank you.
That's the vote. It just passed.
Thank you. And so two of the questions, two of the main questions that we heard was, will residents receive their money and how much money? From the special master, Deborah Green. The money will be distributed this year. Adults are a group, excuse me, adults as a group are allocated 15% of the settlement amount for injury claims and 3% of the settlement amount for property damage claims. The other question that residents have been asking
Except for the arsonist.
This was so crazy.
Process took longer than expected for several reasons. One reason is that many claimants. The special master in court provided assistance to the claimants in the law. Documents on behalf of the claimants. 2.6 million water customer billing records and 40,000 blood leads. Confirm ownership of property so that claimants will not have to find their records. This made the process easier for claimants, but it took some time to obtain the documents. Were ineligible claims, which meant the claimants could ask for reconsideration and get a second review of the claim. It takes time. There were also many appeals, which means the claims that were on appeal were able to have their claims reviewed three times in order to receive the best award possible under the settlement. There have been also hundreds of changes in the status of claimant children, meaning that the legal representative has changed and that has required change to the data and confirmation of a new representative. So the next step in the process is to obtain court approval for the process to be used to calculate individual wars. So those are the two pressing questions that I wanted to make sure that I. Some of the answers from Deborah Green's. And so again, there are other questions here, but for the sake of time, I did not want to sit here and read. Everything on the mic, give you an opportunity to look at what matters to you with your leisure. So. My special order.
That letter to the clerk so she can share it with the rest of us.
I mean, I can, I can give you a hard copy.
Just because I could save it easier than in hard copy.
Oh, not a problem. I'll definitely have it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Not a problem. Anyone else?
I'm trying to find this down.
All right. So seeing there's no one else, that special order is now closed.
They didn't have several, several political podcasts on council. There could be a chance that will give you a little something.
Motion that was tabled.
I'm even, I'm even seeing my, the community college is getting in on a podcast and they grabbing a few.
Getting the copy off of the copy machine. So we'll go ahead and let the duration of the special order.
Build up their platform for all these other people in different cities. Cause you got, you get a bunch of money to spend.
Got their nonprofits going.
Right. Ain't bit more interested in getting you the real news and the real interviews than one, two, three. They trying to get that damn money.
Then they have them work. I mean, half of them want to work for the Mott Foundation anyway. They auditioning. They ain't got, Mott ain't got to ask them to come. They coming to Mott.
Mott this and Mott that, which I mean. Mott didn't have, we, Flint couldn't have made it and can't make it without them. And I get that. What I'm saying is that get something for us. And ain't no damn grocery.
They getting something from themselves.
My grocery store in a minute. They gonna have to pay to get their asses up out of the, out of the, the red.
The question is how, like I was explaining to, I can't wait to, me and, me and the brother, you know, we was, it was a little contention. But like I was trying to explain to him with that grocery store. Do you know we don't own, Blacks don't own none of the, the, the packages that we want? If they want to shut that co-op down, it can be shut down. It can be shut down. That's why I don't want to hear, oh, no, you better learn how to do business. But I, you know, even though, can't, I mean, what's her name? Liddell wanted to call out Judy on that, but look how long you been going on with the BS Judy been pulling. So she somehow thought Judy was going to vote for that. But you see how she didn't voted for Judy's stuff? Man, Candace is, what you, Candace is auditioning for. She's next up to work on the plantation. I'm joking. Yeah, she doing something.
Congressional spot that's open?
Is it?
Then is it somebody leaving or something?
Oh.
Is a congressional spot that's opening up?
Yeah, I think Rivet, ain't Rivet giving up that spot? Allegedly going to be running for senator.
So I can see Candace running for that.
Are you serious?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I can see them putting her there.
She, she, she gonna get that corridor down there.
And he had the state.
So you telling me she gonna get that member that, remember they added to that?
Get the right faces to go out there on her behalf. She'll get it.
You got the damn clerk over there lying to the lawyer. How can you get me out of this? Yeah, nah, Taylor, you right. Them campaigns is, they live in effect. And nobody told us. We can't hear what they voting on everything. Yeah, you right. I, I, I see Candace got a better chance at state rep. You think, you think, you think they gonna take a chance and put Candace in that District AC?
I don't, I just don't see Cynthia Neely giving it up.
No, I said that District AC.
I know, but I don't.
Did you see, did you see Neely get some backing?
No.
And you think Cand, they know Candace just is silly that.
I just don't see him giving up his wife.
He might don't have to give it up. They might be giving it up. No, they might be ready to play. Please don't tell me Cynthia knee went out from sitting down and doing here. Please don't say she blew her knee out from sitting down.
Have to go up there, do that many.
So how she blow her knee out?
I mean, you get old, you gotta get your knee done. Shit, I probably gotta get a knee replacement by the time I'm 60.
Don't make no sense. Oh, Pam Pew running for that seat, but they coming at the Pam Pew.
Did that make a difference? Pam Pew ran for the last seat and, and shit, they got right back in there and did the AC on her ass.
Just the most walking on the scene, Dovina do. Tell them, please let it go. All of them get that, the state rep connection.
What's she talking to Jerry?
Damn, she just snuck down that seat. I hope he can handle it. She just.
Oh, Lord.
She don't care. They don't, they not even respecting the seats up there.
Shut up.
Look at, look at, look at Dovina. She's directing. I don't know if it'll find out, Raphael. Hold on, let me turn this back.
All right. So since the special order is now officially over per the five minutes, we're going to go ahead and circle back to the add-on resolution that we just received from the clerk. And so what we will do is we will put a motion on the floor to approve this resolution.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
I make a motion to approve add-on number one.
Support.
All right. Been supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Michelle.
And I don't know how this motion needs to work, but Madam Clerk, in the second paragraph through you, Madam Chair, to the clerk, says during the regular city council meeting held on November 24th, 2025, the council voted to rescind the previous action in order to exclude the portion of the original resolution related to St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church minus any expenses already incurred. We did, because we did pursuant to Rule 23.2, can we change that to the council voted to rescind pursuant to Rule 23.2? Cause we did the way, we waived it. So it just needs to say to rescind pursuant to Rule 23.2.
You mean just add that language in addition to what else is there?
Yes, just add, yep, add, rescind pursuant to Rule 23.2. Because Todd Bure can't cry over here.
All right, anyone else?
I'm not done, Madam Chair. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mitchell, let's stop yelling out. We're not doing this.
But we are, we're doing it today. It has to be past tense because it's held. We're holding it right now. It has to. Like this is literally November 24th. No, because it's literally November 24th right now. And we're holding it right now. See, we're in the past already. We good? Okay. So that's the, that's what we wanted to add to that. And I don't know if we needed to just say, let's add it now since we're here, or if there needs to be a motion, or how do we do this, Madam Clerk? Or we just say, put it in there?
We will just call it and. You can just add it because the, the add-on hasn't been published or anything. So.
Okay. So we just add that in there?
Add-on number one, yes.
Okay, perfect. So in that second paragraph, we're just adding the council voted to rescind pursuant to Rule 23.2 the previous action in order to exclude the portion of the original resolution related to St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church minus any expenses related, any expenses already incurred. And that original resolution is 250266.1. Go ahead. I think he has a request for something. You got to tell the chair.
Request for information.
Go ahead.
Can you pause my time?
I guess, so there's need to be another resolution to give St. Mark's money? Oh, okay. So this is actually the recension. And then we still have to do, so there's three actions that we had to do. Okay.
We're on action number two.
Ooh, that's a lot. Okay.
All right. That is all, Madam Clerk. If there's nothing that needs to happen, since it's not published, that we just needed to add that language before it's published, then that's all. I yield.
All right, anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I just want to point out that the resolution does state that another resolution will come to, for your consideration for the funds that are left over after what has already been.
I don't know.
expended for Saint Mark's. And that will go to Saint Mark Community Outreach Center. That's the language that needs to be added. That'll be a future resolution that we can bring, um, for the next committee.
And so that needs to be added to this?
No, it's already language that says as much in this resolution.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you. Anyone else in the first round? Or anyone else in the second round? All right, so seeing there's no one in the second round, so I will take my time to ask the clerk. So could you please read the second paragraph in its entirety of how it should be? Read.
Uh, second paragraph we'll read, during the regular city council meeting held on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, the council voted to rescind pursuant to rule twenty, pursuant to the rules governing meetings of the Flint City Council, Rule Number twenty-three point two. The previous action in order to exclude the portion of the original resolution related to Saint Mark Missionary Baptist Church minus any expenses already incurred.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so, um, since that's, it's my time, I'll go ahead and are we on the second, no, we're already just second round. So this is called for the vote. So a vote to approve add-on number one.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Alamein is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machado?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no?
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Madam Chair.
Resolution number one passes. You go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Yes, um, through you to the city clerk. Um, Miss, Madam Clerk, on, um, I think it's the seventeenth, we have, um, to, we have committee meetings and council meetings. Is that correct?
December seventeenth, yes.
Is there any way that we can move everything from committee directly to council? And if we choose not to pass, that we can just send and then cancel the committee meetings for that day?
Um, it's, if that's the council's pleasure.
I make a motion to have, have no committee meetings on the seventeenth and have everything from com, um, that should have gone into committee, onto the council in order to get out soon. On the seventeenth, we have. On the seventeenth, we have, we have all three committee hearings, meetings, and the council meeting scheduled, which is why I, I'm trying to shorten our time.
Well, through the chair.
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, you would have to vote to suspend your rules because you are to have two, I think, two meetings per month. That rule.
Okay. All right, so then, um, we want to rescind your support? Which rule is that? Do you have, you have your rules in your hand?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanna, is, does that pertain to regular meetings? Cause she's asking to cancel the committees, not the regular meeting for that day. They would still have two regular meetings in December. One on the eighth and one on the seventeenth.
Okay.
So that makes.
Well, it, I mean.
Well.
I, I understand that. I understand that, but the way that call the question has been coming to effect, I'm hesitant on supporting this. Unless we have a gentleman's agreement, that call the question isn't going to happen during that meeting.
Can always have that.
So that's, that's my only contention.
So that is possible that we can do that? And then we can go into discussion? I'm waiting for our city attorney.
So through the chair, uh, the rule would be five point two, where it says the regular council meetings are at five-thirty on the second and fourth Monday of every month. And regular meetings of the finance, government, ops, and legislative shall be at five PM the Wednesday proceeding.
All right, so we're talking about suspending Rule five point two? All right, so, um, is there a motion on the floor to, go ahead.
Make a motion to spend, to suspend Rule five point two for the meeting on December seventeenth.
All right, any support? Supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward. Any discussion? First ward, first round.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Pfeiffer.
So unless there is a, uh, an agreement between all of us that no call the question will happen on that day, I'm not going to support this. So, um, I think committees are for us to do work, and if we're gonna bypass committees and make that council a working meeting, then, and I have no idea what's gonna be on the agenda, but if it's gonna be a call the question immediately, then, uh, I don't, I'm not gonna support that. So if there's a consensus that we're not going to call the question on that meeting, then I'll support it. If not, I won't support it.
Didn't make.
Is that your time, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Okay. Anyone else in the first round?
Um, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilwoman Priestley, I would like to offer a counter motion. Okay, she's not listening. Um, I'd like, I'd like to make a, a substitute motion.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Um, I would like to make a motion that on December seventeenth, we suspend Rule, was that five point two? For December seventeenth, and that we have special affairs, where all items will go into special affairs, and then we still have council. So that's the motion.
Okay, so you're saying on December seventeenth, move all committee items to special affairs?
Yes.
And still have?
Council. That way if there, anybody wants to separate or whatever.
Okay, so.
Through the chair.
So, so are you saying?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Once you add special affairs, that triggers Rule four point six, because special affairs are on Monday, so you gotta include that rule as well.
Okay, we can suspend four point six and five point two, uh, make a motion to suspend four point six and five point two for December seventeenth, and that we only have special affairs, in which all regular item, meeting item, go into special affairs, and then we have our regular council meeting.
I'll support that.
All right, um, Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Yes.
All right, so, and Councilwoman in the fourth ward supported it? So, um, any discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm confused, because the whole thing was so that we have one meeting to get out quicker. So what's the difference if it goes to normal committee, if we have that meeting versus having it on special affairs, because it's still in committee meeting? So why not just leave it in the original one if we're not going to put it directly to council? What's the point? I mean, we're cutting out public speaking, that's it.
That's it. That's, that's, cause otherwise they would have opportunities to speak.
Okay.
All right, anyone else in the, oh, is that your time? Anyone else in the first round? Anyone else in the second round? All right, so Madam Clerk, for the record, could you please read that?
So the motion on the floor is to uh, suspend Rule four point six concerning special affairs committees and five point two concerning the regular committee meetings every month for December seventeenth in order to instead have a special affairs committee meeting with all items submitted for committees on special affairs, followed by a regular council meeting.
All right. Well, with that being said, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call, Mr. Alamein is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machado?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, zero no?
The vote is, um, eight yes, a zero no.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
No, no, no. Oh. We got one more to do. Oh, I take it back. Yeah, thank you. We did all that work.
Okay, so what, what is the?
Madam, uh, Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve, um, Saint Mark Community Outreach Center for twenty-five thousand dollars for food access.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve Saint Mark Community, um, Outreach Center for food access. Any support? I'm supported by the councilman in the eighth ward. Any discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So they've already received five thousand dollars, is that correct? You, so it would be an additional five thousand? And I still want, um, I will amend, I, I mean, and that's a question through you to whomever. Um, would it still be twenty-five thousand dollars if they've already received five? Request for information.
What is your request?
Just to speaker know that they paid that off. They haven't received any, because they did not sign the contract with the food bank. So they have not spent any money of the twenty-five thousand. There is a meaning that I'll, I'll be up my time for that. So they haven't spent any of that money.
Okay, go ahead. Start her time back. Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Um, well, I also want to make sure that this does goes to their account on the, on the, on food bank as in the previous, um, resolution. Otherwise, I will not support it. It, so. See? It, it needs to go to the account and the food bank to provide for their, the delivery of the food, not the purchase of the food.
Let's see. Okay. All right, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So clearly a gentleman's or ladies' agreement is not what we're doing here. So one, they do not have the money. Two, we did Asbury to go to Asbury. I don't know why this restraint on Saint Mark's, when we come to the black community, seems to be a problem. That is a problem for me. And so they have it in good standing with the state of Michigan. And we've explained, they don't owe them any money. I sidebar with the, with the city attorney. The city attorney has, um, set up to, to verify tomorrow with Elder Napier to make sure, which they've already stated. And so they don't owe money. And so why are we micromanaging the black community so bad? And so I have a problem with that. So it needs to stay just as it is. Let it go to them. They never signed a contract and never used it. And that's gonna be verified tomorrow after two or three, where, um, our chief attorney will be speaking with them. So let's not micromanage them. Let's, let's not do that. Everyone has kept their agreements. And then to flip this after we passed Asbury, it's not a good look for our community. It's not operating in good faith. It's not, because yours didn't go to food, Asbury didn't go to the food bank. It did not. It did not go to the food bank. And so I'm not, no, it, I, we need to leave it as is, and so we can move on. We're spending so much time on this because of micromanaging. So, um, mine stands as it is to go to Saint Mark Community Outreach Center, twenty-five thousand. They don't have a balance. I've already, I've already talked to the city attorney. I yield the floor.
Anyone else in the first round? All right, seeing there's no one else in the first round, um, I'll go ahead. I'll take my time. So I wanna, I would like to verify these things before we give, um, Saint Mark the fund. So I concur, um, with Councilwoman Priestley, because we receive two, two separate narratives. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. In addition to, it's not an issue with them, with the money going to the food bank as long as we put their clause in their contract.
Request for information. Who's? Who said it's not an issue with it going to the food bank for Saint Mark?
Who said?
Yeah.
From, from what I'm hearing here.
No, that's not what's on the floor.
Okay, well, again, I had a, I'm, I am not comfortable with that. Because, because the money, no, it has nothing to do with black, because this is the same thing. This is the same thing that Councilwoman Burns pulled with the food, um, with the Northside Food Market. They kept coming, you kept getting out your seat and et cetera, et cetera.
You need to stay germane.
So, so as I, as I'm saying.
Point of order.
What is your point?
Point of order. You need to be germane, and don't speak to my motives. This, now you want to sink this, yeah, you are.
Ms. Burns, bringing you to order. Thank you. And so let's not begin to speak on, again, people motives and, and et cetera, and what's happening, because I'm just speaking on what happened. And when we start talking about, you know, people playing with the public, they came here and the, and the finish line kept changing for them. First it was three hundred, well, no, at first it was six hundred. What is your point?
We're talking about, you're not germane.
I'm being very germane.
Point of order, I've not completed what I'm stating, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. We are talking about Saint Mark. This has nothing to do.
What rule has been violated?
And Dr. Flynn just sent the thank you. They've gotten their funds.
Thank you.
Let's stay, can we please stay focused?
Definitely will stay focused, but if you're gonna call a colleague out or attempt to call a colleague out for not supporting things that are black, you must recognize that the same thing took place in these chambers when the Northland Food Market kept coming before us, when they kept coming up here for those funds. So I'm, I'm highlighting that behavior. But the reason why I don't feel comfortable is because at first Saint Mark, they had a balance with the food bank. They had one. I'm not sure if they still do now. So we want to make sure that the food bank is paid. So if we put the money in Saint Mark's coffers, that's not guaranteeing the food bank to get paid. However, if we give this money, if we give this, this twenty-five.
Well, request for information.
What is your request?
Um, do you know that the food bank does not allow you to run a balance?
That's not true. That, that's not true.
I'm telling you, I met with them.
Again, Ms. Burns, I, I met with them as well. I, I appreciate your information. I definitely respect it, but unfortunately I don't agree. So I had a meeting with the food bank. And so what we need to do to ensure, because again, this is where the food is coming from, from the food bank. So there's no need for us to do it in a roundabout way. If they're gonna purchase food from the food bank, or let's say the truck from the food bank, not the food, because the food is free. If they're gonna purchase the truck from the food bank in pure transparency, just give the money to the food bank. So there will be no, that, there will be no balances that they owe. They can just draw down. So every week, they will draw down. There's no need to give them, there's no need to put the extra twenty-five thousand in their coffers. It doesn't make sense. This way it ensures again that the food bank is paid and the money is hitting the target, which is, uh, preparing the trucks for the people.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Has the food not hit the target in the lines with the people before? I mean, I, I, cause that seems to be a concern.
Ms. Burns, that, that, that is, uh, an appropriate use of a privileged motion. But I will answer that. And so we want to make sure that the twenty-five thousand in its entirety is going directly to Saint Mark. And since Saint Mark is purchasing their, their food bank truck, because that was the issue. The issue was they multiplied the value of the truck.
Request for information.
Go ahead, what's your request?
That's not the entire issue. I met with the entire board, not just Will Faracus. I met with Karina, the entire board. That's not the entire process. So you're not stating it correctly. We need to treat Asbury and Saint Mark and Bethel, we did Bethel, the same.
I under, I understand your request, but unfortunately, Asbury and Bethel did not have a, an outstanding balance with.
Request for information.
Yes.
Saint Mark does not have a balance. So please stop reiterating it. Did you know that?
Ms. Burns, all I know is the document that I have. Now, if you have anything contrary, I'll invite you to please share them with the body. But just like last, just like last week, what is your request, Ms. Burns?
I just sidebar in the attorney dear here, and she's going to have a conference tomorrow. So it can be contingent on, did you know that? So it can be contingent on, did you know that? And she, they did state that there is no balance.
Again, they had a balance. And we want to make sure that there is no balance.
Have or have. They do not have one currently today. And that is where I sidebared with the city attorney. She has a conference call after she gets out of court, did you know that?
Ms. Burns, you're, you're continuing to use the privileged motion to take the floor, and that's in violation of our rules. This is during, this is my time. And so, as I continue to use my time, my point is, I want to make sure, again, that the money allocated for Saint Mark, because we received the narrative last time that they tripled the price of the truck. Okay? And, and we received a totally different narrative, and I didn't understand what was happening until I reached out. And when I reached out, they made it abundantly clear what's happening. So if they're gonna give, if they're gonna purchase food from the food bank, why, why are we doing it roundabout? Why don't we just give the money as we planned, directly to the food bank? So, they, they can continue to draw down the balance. So that's 25 deliveries with the truck. No questions, the money is going straight to the food bank. So we won't ever even have to have this, do they have a balance deal? Because they, because they won't, it won't be an opportunity. Because they have 25 deliveries for the food truck. So-
Request for information.
What is your request?
My request is, it is not the same, and they will raise the price.
That is not a request, that's an improper, Ms. Burns, that, Ms. Burns, that's your warning. That's your warning, I'm sorry.
Then I'll appeal the ruling of the chair, so if you want to go down this road.
That's fine, that's fine. Anyone gonna support that? That's fine. Go ahead, put one minute on the clock, and we're talking about the, the warning that you just received for violating privileged motions. Please proceed.
I shouldn't have received the warning, number one, but it is your intent and your bias that you can't get over yourself. This is about feeding the community. How can you, and it's in your work, you've been in that line, that you are going to change, now y'all changing the narrative. Judy Chang and just not you, Judy and Liddell, which their people's word was given. One, it's not the same, you did not meet with that board. It is, it's my, you're on my time.
Excuse me.
You're on my time.
Ms. Burns, you're not germane to the warning.
I am, I'm talking, no, I said you were not, no, that was what we talked about.
Proceed.
You know, you just don't like, you're wrong. And when we talk about this, that board stated if the money goes to them, and you thought you knew the answer, which you did not, it is going to be more per truck. Because they, how their agreement is, was receiving money from the city. So you're wrong. I said it, that board. Now they are in good standing, they are-
Ms. Burns, you're not being germane, you're not being germane.
That's the food bank, how is that not germane?
You're out of order, you're not being germane.
How is the food bank not germane?
The motion, with the warning.
Point of order.
You are killing the warning.
Point of order. Can I get my time back, because you keep interrupting?
No, no, she may not.
You keep interrupting.
What's your point?
The, the allotment of one minute doesn't say that you have to state germane to the warning. The, the rule does not state that at all.
That part.
So the- Okay, all right. So, as I proceed.
As you proceed, I still have time.
Oh, go ahead, give her three minutes, go ahead.
So she sucked my time up, like she's sucking the life out this council.
Thank you. Thank you, go ahead and start. So, the issue on the floor is not discussing Saint Mark. It's discussing the warning, and Mrs. Burns continues to abuse privileged motions. A privileged motion are used for two things. Point of order, to talk about a rule that has been breached. Or number two, is to, to gain information from, a request for information for information that you do not have. Ms. Burns continuously took the floor, not doing either of those things. So that's why she was brought to order. Has nothing to do with that conversation. So, if you would like to support the ruling of the chair, vote no. If you would like to, if you would like to overturn the ruling of the chair, vote yes. Go ahead, Madam, Madam Clerk, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis.
No.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Priestley.
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Mashat.
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alameda's absent. The vote is seven yes, one no.
The vote is seven yes, one no. The ruling of the chair has been overturned. So we are at, I was in the middle of speaking, so those are my 18 seconds? Okay, thank you. And so, as I continue to reference, I want to make sure that the entire body, that we have the same information and not hearsay. They had an issue with the same information and not hearsay. They had an issue with the same information and not hearsay. They had an issue with the same information and not hearsay. They had an issue with the same information and not hearsay. They had an issue with the same information and not hearsay. They had an issue with-
Isn't addressed in any of our previous resolutions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Priestley. Anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
Talking with Councilwoman Burns, she is fine to amend, to say contingent upon the clerk's conversation. That, and, not the clerk, but the attorney's conversa, conversation and confirmation that they do not owe any money to the food bank. So I think that we should give her an opportunity to make the amendment that she wanted to make to her original motion. Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that Saint Mark be given the $25,000 directly, contingent upon confirmation from the city attorney that they have not already received any, or that they do not owe anything to the food bank. Support.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to give Saint Mark $25,000 directly, contingent on they do not owe the food bank? Okay, so that is- All right, any discussion in the, no, any support?
I'd support it, Madam Chair.
Any discussion in the first round? Any discussion in the second round? All right, well, I'll go ahead and use my time in the second round. So it says contingent that they do not owe money to the food bank, and we're also talking about the money that they may have drawn down. So- All right, so that, so they don't owe, and also that they, that they drew down. All right, because you said specifically 25. All right. So, through you, city attorney, so, so that reflects that contingent on the money that they do not owe, excuse me, contingent on money that they owe the food bank, if any, and contingent on the money that may have already been drawn down from their accounts.
That, that sounds correct. I think the intent of this resolution is that if there is any money that has been expensed from the $25,000, that that be deducted from the new resolution.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, no one else in the second round? So this is for the, the motion. The second motion about it being contingent on them not owing the food bank. All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
And Dr. Lewis?
No.
The vote is seven yes, one no.
The vote is seven yes, one no.
Motion to adjourn.
And that resolution passes.
Support.
The motion to adjourn by the councilman in the 8th Ward, and supported by the councilman in the 7th Ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
The vote is eight yes, zero no, that resolution, excuse me, the meeting now adjourned at 8:50.